Hey, this is Steve Inskeep. One of the things you can count on from NPR and this station, we've got your back. When it comes to reporting the news, bringing you facts you can count on. And one thing this station counts on is contributions to keep going. You can help by donating a vehicle you no longer need, which is free to you, easy to do, and could mean hundreds of dollars' worth of support. Thanks.
To donate your vehicle, go to radioiq.org. And thanks.
This is Ira Glass. On This American Life, sometimes we just show up somewhere, turn on our tape recorders, and see what happens.
If you can't get seven cars in 12 days, you gotta look yourself in the mirror and say, "Holy [bleep], what are you kidding me?"
Like, at this car dealership, trying to sell its monthly quota of cars, and it is not going well.
I just don't want one balloon to a car. Balloon the whole parking place, so it looks like I'm circus.
Real-life stories every week.
Monday evenings at 8:00 and Saturday afternoons at 3:00 on Radio IQ.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and MathWorks, creator of MATLAB and Simulink software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And City Space Productions, WBUR's creative studio for custom podcasts that tell a brand's story to ignite engagement, reach new audiences, or establish thought leadership.
It's Here and Now. Two-time Super Bowl champion Deion Sanders has a brand-new bladder. You may have heard the news last week. The University of Colorado football coach said he'd been diagnosed with bladder cancer last spring, and the doctors made a new bladder out of his small intestine. We want to learn more about that remarkable procedure. Dr. Daniel Gynusman is an oncologist who treats bladder cancer at Fox Chase Cancer Center in Philadelphia. Doctor, welcome.
Thank you. Good to be here.
I think a lot of people were probably surprised that this was even possible. How do you build a new bladder out of a small intestine?
Yeah, yeah, it is pretty amazing. You know, our intestine is very long, and so you don't need all of it for normal day-to-day function. And so what a urologic oncologist will do is they'll take a piece of that bowel, and they will basically make a new bladder, a new pouch or a balloon, if you want to think of it that way, where the ureters, which are the tubes that go from the kidney into the bladder, they connect into that new bladder on one end, and then the other end is connected to the urethra, and you then have a fully functioning bladder. And you can have an excellent quality of life. You can learn how to use that bladder and control the urine flow, and so it's an excellent alternative for patients that are candidates for it.
Now, you mentioned it's an alternative. What's the benefit of doing it this way? Because I'm a complete layperson here, I know nothing about this, but my first impression would be, well, could you get a bladder transplanted from somebody else? So why this method?
Yeah, so there hasn't been really bladder transplants for a lot of reasons, but that has not been done yet. The traditional method, the tried-and-true approach, is a cystectomy, where the bladder is removed, and then the ureters are connected into a little piece of the bowel, and then it's brought out onto the skin. It's called a stoma, and urine is continuously coming out of that stoma, and the patient has to have a bag over it. That's the typical way of doing the surgery. There's a third way, which is called an Indiana pouch, where a little pouch is created, and you have to self-catheterize that pouch. But as you just hear, both of those approaches have some quality-of-life complications. And although many patients have it and they work well, if you can have a new bladder, and if you can make it work, certainly is preferable for many.
I see. So during a press conference at the University of Colorado last week, Deion Sanders kind of joked about how he now struggles to go to the bathroom since the surgery. Let's listen.
Right now, I'm still dealing with going to the bathroom. Like, it's a whole life change. Like, I can't, and I'm gonna be transparent, I can't pee like I used to pee. It's totally different.
Doctor, can you talk about that? What it's like to adapt to life with a new bladder like this?
Yeah, so you can imagine, in a normal body, we have sphincters and muscles that all work together in rhythm. And when you remove the normal bladder and you have to reconstruct that pathway, you basically have to relearn how to urinate. You have to, A, learn how to control your bladder, so that you're not leaking all the time, and at the same time, you have to learn how to squeeze and empty your bladder, and that's a process. And that's actually a long process, and it's one of the reasons why this is not a very common procedure, because for a lot of people, this is difficult. And there can be other complications. You can develop strictures. It's a longer operation, more complicated operation, and that's why the tried-and-true method, the cystectomy with the stoma, is what you see oftentimes. But hopefully, over time, he will adapt, he will learn, and he'll be able to live a normal life.
You know, I imagine there may be some lingering stigma about the leakage that you mentioned, or incontinence that may follow a procedure like this. Do you think it's helpful to have someone like this football star, right, Deion Sanders, talking about this so openly?
Absolutely, absolutely. And bladder cancer in general is not a very rare disease. It's probably the sixth or seventh most common cancer in the United States, and so having somebody of this stature discuss it, make it normal, normalize it, is very important.
His doctors say he's cured after this procedure. Is that a common outcome?
Yeah, so I think a lot of patients can be cured with early-stage bladder cancer, and hopefully, that's the case for him. The truth of the matter is that, as anybody who's dealt with cancer knows, you don't know for 100% until sometime has passed. But it is certainly a common outcome in early-stage, non-muscle-invasive bladder cancer.
And just briefly, before we let you go, what are some of the signs of bladder cancer, so people can be aware of that?
Yeah, probably the most important is blood in your urine. So we call it hematuria. It can be microscopic, or maybe your doctor just tells you they notice it, or it can be something you see when you go to urinate. And I think the most important thing, if I could say anything, is if you see any blood in your urine, let your doctor know. Do not let it go. This disease can be quite aggressive, and time is of the essence.
All right. Dr. Daniel Gynusman, an oncologist who treats bladder cancer at Fox Chase Cancer Center in Philadelphia. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Peter Roden in Phoenix.
I'm Anthony Brooks in Boston. Thanks for being with us. This is Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from Made In, makers of cookware found in restaurants around the world, offering a carbon steel, non-stick griddle for home use, designed for use indoors or outdoors, on a grill or over an open flame. More at madeincookware.com.
For many Americans, public broadcasters are their only source for news, information, educational programs, and emergency alerts. For the first time in more than 55 years, these stations will not receive federal funding. What does that mean for you? Don't worry, the station will not go off the air, but we may have to cut back on our programming if we cannot make up the $300,000 a year we get from the government. Every single donation counts. Please consider giving online at radioiq.org or wvtf.org.
Democrats could take back the Congress by flipping three seats. If Donald Trump gets five new seats in Texas, that majority becomes eight seats. It is more than doubling the entire cushion of the current Republican majority.
I'm Michael Barbaro. That's today on The Daily from the New York Times.
That's The Daily, beginning at 6:30 on Radio IQ every weekday.
You're listening to Radio IQ on WVTF Roanoke, WRQ Charles City, Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WVTW Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISE FM Wise, WQIQ Spotsylvania, WIQR Lexington, WEHC Emory, HD3 of WURV Richmond, and on 92.5 Richmond and 94.9 Fredericksburg. Radio IQ, a listener-supported community service of Virginia Tech, on your smart speaker and online at radioiq.org.
Funding for Here and Now comes from MathWorks, creator of MATLAB and Simulink software, accelerating the pace of engineering.
Good afternoon, and welcome to our 2 o'clock PM session of Roanoke City Council on Monday, August 4th. I'll ask our deputy city clerk, Ms. Webb, to please call to roll.
Mr. Nash?
Here.
Mr. Volason?
Here.
Ms. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Here.
And a quorum is present.
We're pleased to welcome the Reverend Terry Kemp, Associate Pastor and Ministries Director at Fort Chiswell Church of God, to bring our invocation, and then I'll lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for this day, for your grace and the many blessings you bestow upon each of us. We thank you for the opportunity to live and serve in this great city, and for the abilities you've given each of us. We ask your blessing on each member of this council, and our city leaders and their responsibilities to represent all citizens of this city in a professional and unbiased manner. We pray for wisdom and vision in our endeavors to put forth our best efforts for the benefit of this community and for your glory. Let us acknowledge the legitimacy of each viewpoint expressed here today, that we may partner together in our efforts to achieve successful resolutions. We pray for your divine inspiration for decisions made in this chamber today and in the days to come. We pray for divine protection and safety for all of our citizens, in particular, our children, who will be returning to school in the coming days. Almighty God, inspire us to even greater achievements, as the city of Roanoke continues to be a leading example of city progress and partnership. May each of us always reproach our daily responsibilities with integrity and a desire for excellence. And we pray for our nation to not be divided, but united in our continual pursuit to remain the global leader in democracy and greatness. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
..........................................
Couple of announcements to begin our meeting this afternoon. The city council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RVTV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And as of this meeting today, our meetings are video-streamed live through youtube.com at Roanoke, Virginia. They are no longer livestreamed on Facebook, so as of today, they are on YouTube, so please tune in there. City Council of Roanoke is seeking applications for various vacancies on council-appointed authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. You can access an online application form at roanokeva.gov on the city's website. I also want to call your attention to something you've probably already noticed. Notice, the nudist. That's... All right, that could go a lot of different ways. Council chambers look different. We announced two weeks ago that they would be refreshed. I want to thank Dr. Patton, Lydia Patton, who was our interim city manager, for taking the lead on this, and especially to Deputy City Manager Sam Roman and our facilities team for their extraordinary work in a very small window of opportunity to refresh this space. So we're grateful to all of them, and we welcome you today. We're going to begin this afternoon with council shout-outs, and these are opportunities that we have in our visits to different parts of the city, engaging with citizens over the past couple of weeks, to give shout-outs to things that we noticed that were of particular importance or special things happening in the life of our city. So I'm going to actually put Councilman Nash on the spot to start us today.
So for my shout-out, I have two. One is a proactive shout-out. I want to shout out all those today that are putting in the work to put on all of the national night out events tomorrow. Those take a lot of planning from the various neighborhood associations. Takes a lot of, you know, planning and teamwork, so I'm thankful to all of them, and I hope everyone has a great time and a safe time. And then, secondly to that, the Melrose Plaza grand opening, that was a fantastic event. I mean, if you've not had a chance to stop by there and either use the grocery store or see the history wall they unveiled, I mean, it'll choke you up a little bit when you see the history on that wall. At least it did for me a little bit. So I encourage everyone to please stop by there, check it out, and I'm thankful for all the folks at Goodwill and all the various community partners that played a role or have a role in the future of that plaza going forward.
Thank you. Councilman Volason?
Well, your second one got my first one, so I wanted to give a shout-out to the Melrose Plaza as well, especially Richmond.
Okay, hold on just a second. Apparently, there's some issues hearing, so if we could alert the guys in the back, if they could maybe adjust the sound. We'll carry on. Hopefully, they can adjust it in the back.
Sorry. Melrose Plaza, I want to also especially thank Richmond Vincent, the president of Goodwill, who helped make that vision a reality. It was a lot of hard work, and it's amazing to see so many facilities in one location. It's like a one-stop shop for getting out of poverty, and so we're really excited to have that here in the city. So thank you to everybody who was a part of that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Powers?
Well, they stole mine, too, so I will say, this weekend, a shout-out to the state of Virginia for the no-tax, and for everybody that was shopping at all of our Walmart stores to help pack the school bus. I made a trip to several of the Walmart stores, so a shout-out to everybody who helped pack that school bus.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll give a shout-out to the Arts Commission and the latest volume of the Arts Connect Neighbors catalog that is out. I encourage everyone to check this out. My Neighborhood Association has used it a couple of times in Old Southwest, and I know that other neighborhood associations have as well, and there are a lot of really great offerings in here for all ages, kind of all interests, and it's a great way, if you're looking to strengthen your neighborhood association or organization, or restart a neighborhood group that maybe fell apart during COVID. I think there are a lot of great offerings in here that are a lot of fun. My neighborhood organization has utilized them, so I just want to give a shout-out to everyone that helped pull this together and pick up a copy, and I hope that you can utilize it in your neighborhood. Thank you for your work on it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sanchez Jones?
Well, I would like to thank Dr. Patton again and general staff, but I also want to thank the city clerk staff. They were here after we left on the second meeting, kind of late, and they picked up everything that was out here, and thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilman Hagan?
Much to reiterate some of the things. Definitely that Melrose Plaza opening, that was a great event, and highly encourage people, if y'all haven't checked it out, to go down there. Also, shout-out to Vice Mayor. Yesterday, he had a cleanup of the River and Greenway that I was able to take part of, and really, a lot of very interesting stuff that we found.
Well, thank you all. Great work throughout the community. I want to give a shout-out to J.D. Sutphen. J.D. is not only a co-owner in Six and Sky, the restaurant on rooftop of Center and Square, but for at least seven years, maybe eight, has brought Big Lick Comic-Con to Roanoke. And if you've never gone, I really encourage you to go. If your inner geek needs feeding, it's a great place to go and see people truly expressing in so many unique and fun and special ways who they are. I love to go to see people in the community that I may not get to see otherwise or talk to otherwise. But it was also fun, because I got to meet three pretty legendary television stars and movie stars who were in Roanoke for two days. Tony Danza was here. He played the ukulele. I asked him, like, "Tony, when did you start playing the ukulele?" And he said, "Well, I have this calendar at home, and every day, I pick something off the calendar, and it directs me to do something." And a couple of months ago, it directed me to buy a ukulele and learn to play it over 30 days, and practice it every day. And so he's picked up a new skill. Morgan Fairchild was there. She told me she was heading from Roanoke back to Dallas to do a South Fork reunion and Knots Landing reunion, and starting a podcast with her sister. I mean, these were like having conversations with your neighbor about things they're into. And then Tim Daly from Wings. They were all so personable and happy to be in Roanoke, and it was just a special time. And on top of that, I got to meet two of the original Power Rangers, so... It was all right here in Roanoke, so good stuff all around. Well, I would like to, at this point, invite Dr. Brenda Hale and Ms. Sheila Heron to meet me at the podium for a special presentation. So today, we are honored to have with us representatives of the Roanoke branch of the NAACP and youth, who recently participated in the NAACP ACTSO Competition Convention. Is that what you call it?
Yes, sir.
There were 32 categories featured across STEM, performing arts, humanities, visual arts, business, and culinary arts. And where was the competition this year?
Charlotte.
Charlotte, North Carolina. Students competed for medals, scholarships, and other prizes, demonstrating the program's commitment to recognizing and fostering excellence within the black community. The local winners also participated in the national opening ceremony to represent their city and state. There were over 600 Olympians that competed this year, and they all did an excellent job in their field. On May 19th, the Roanoke branch of the NAACP held its annual ACTSO, which stands for Afro-Academic, Cultural, Technological, and Scientific Olympics, competition at William Fleming High School under the leadership of Ms. Sheila Heron, ACTSO Chair, and Ms. Kai Washington-Brown Co-Chair, alongside Dr. Brenda Hale, Roanoke Branch President, and the dedicated members of the ACTSO Committee, and of course, Marilyn Harmon is here with us today as well. So I'm going to let you all announce the winners, because after the local competition, the local winners went to compete in the national, and I'm going to let you share the good news.
Hello, everyone. So of course, I'm very excited. This isn't our first year, and I'm excited to say that we've won gold before, so I'm excited about this. So this year, locally, like you said, we had the competition, and we had Nazir Jackson, who participated in photography. Can you turn around, Nazir? He won gold in photography. And his pictures were beautiful. They were different pictures of animals, an elephant, a giraffe, and...
A zebra.
A zebra. And they were really beautiful, so much so that they made it all the way to the national competition. So we're very excited for Nazir. And then we have Ms. Bernazia Devlin. Ms. Bernazia had a gold medal here locally in poetry performance. Her poem was outstanding here, and she also performed it there and did an amazing job. So that's Ms. Bernazia, and she's from Salem. And then, of course, we had our gold medalist, Ms. Simone Bryant. Now, Ms. Simone did something very unique. Her medal, what she won with, was a sculpture. I'm going to let them tell you about it, but it was amazing. If we could get a picture of it on the screen. There you go. Yes, that is what she created. Simone. Simone.
Hi, my name is Simone Bryant. I'm a graduated senior from William Fleming High
I'm a graduated senior from William Fleming High School. I had the chance to participate in ACTSO. This is my second year. I got gold, and I made it to nationals. The name of my piece is Nelumbunisafaris, a scientific name for lotus flower. What you saw was welded steel. Oh, so this is my second year competing in ACTSO. You all heard the acronym. It stands for Afro-Academic, Cultural, Technological, Scientific Olympics. You can compete in up to three categories. I competed in poetry performance, poetry written, and sculpture, got gold in sculpture, went to nationals with it. I've also been an active member of the NAACP for a decade now. I encourage our youth to... Oh, yes. I was able to create this sculpture in a program called Day Tech. It's the new kind of like trades building that William Fleming has. I've been in that program for two years. I've been voting for two years under Mr. Wagner. I'm also a certified welder through the program.
Good afternoon, everyone. You can tell that I'm up there just as proud as can be of all of our ACTSO Olympians and our distinguished chair, and Dr. Harmon has been with us for years now also. You know, we still have heartache because of Gloria Randolph King's passing, but we worked so hard to honor her memory by achieving excellence with the youth in this community. 2002, when we had Harry Belafonte here, he said, great talents comes out of communities like Roanoke. And we are adamant about giving our youth every opportunity that we can put in front of them. So it has been a pleasure. I've been the president since 2000, and it just keeps getting better and better. And I also want to say thank you to this community, to all of our supporters of the ACTSO program, because we could not do this without support. And we want to thank the city of Roanoke. Thank you, Reverend Dr. Mayor Joe Cobb, and we thank all of the city council members that come out, because we may use you as a judge, because we have so many that participate in ACTSO now that we're always keeping an eye out for judges, because that way, we give them the best opportunity that we can. If you don't mind, I would like for Dr. Harmon to step forward and say something. And my heart says thank you so much for supporting us.
Hello, everyone. Again, special thanks to all of you who encourage us to stand behind the young people. It's our youth that will carry us forward, and we want to encourage them in every way that we can. It's a saying, if a task is once begun, never leave it till it's done. Be it great or be it small, do it well or not at all. And they have done their best. And sometimes, you don't always have to win. It's that you're in the contest, and that's what we're trying to say to them. It's the experience that you get from a situation, and we are so proud of them. Thank you.
All right, moving on in our agenda, we're at item three, which is the Hearing of Citizens Upon Public Matters. We set this time aside as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to council as she may deem appropriate. Each person invited to speak, it depends on how many?
Three minutes.
Yeah, three minutes. Okay, everyone will have three minutes. If you've not spoken at city council before, when you come up to the podium, you'll see a box up in the corner that has a timer on it and has lights, green, yellow, and red. Green means go. Yellow means you have a minute left, and red means stop or wrap it up. I'll work with you on that. But we're glad you're here today, that you've taken the time to sign up and share your perspective. So Ms. Webb, if you'll call the first two folks up?
Jan Keister? And Anthony Stavola?
Hi, City Council. I have, I'm sorry, I have three topics. I'm Jan Keister of Marshall Avenue Southwest. I am certified in city planning and have been elected by the Old Southwest Inc. Board of Directors to represent the Old Southwest neighborhood in zoning issues. We are requesting that the city review and revise our zoning ordinances. Research suggests that there are more effective approaches than we are currently using. When I got involved in zoning, city planning staff referred me to the American Planning Association's Equity and Zoning Policy Guide as a tool that they use to plan zoning changes. I am asking Roanoke City Council to follow these guidelines and make zoning changes that incorporate the following recommendations from the guide. Residents want to be involved in decision-making, particularly when it involves variances. They want stricter regulations reinstated with the right to encourage positive change and to veto detrimental projects. Secondly, zoning should be by neighborhood and decided by neighbors, perhaps through the existing neighborhood plan process or overlays. Currently, zoning is citywide, so this would require major revisions. According to city, Roanoke city planners and verified by my research, some cities have successfully eliminated traditional zoning ordinances and replaced them with beefed-up neighborhood plans. I strongly encourage you to request a zoning review and revision in a process that is open to citizen input at the planning stage and able to incorporate input at all stages of the process. That's topic one. Topic two. Yay, I'm also a training member of the local dog club, and I've studied dog law and read about it. Wolf dogs are legally an issue because they are not hybrids. Wolves and dogs are the same species. I have, I am recommending or suggesting that you contact government relations of the American Kennel Club. They are set up to help deal with problems like getting ordinances that are fair to everybody and actually say what you want them to say. Joe, I sent you the information and a link. I'll give that also to the clerk here. Third of all, the Jefferson Center. I work at the Legal Aid Society, one of the many tenants of the Jefferson Center, and I urge you to please save that. I know legal aid helps over 2,500 people each year that are low-income with housing and other legal issues, but we're just one of many tenants there, and they also, of course, do performance stuff. So please save the Jefferson Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keister. Welcome, Mr. Stavola. Dr. Stavola, excuse me.
I'm both of those. I'm also celebrating my 53rd anniversary today, spending it with you all.
Oh, bless you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I also want to speak to the resolution you have before you later on today about re-studying the zoning amendments. These zoning amendments can and should be improved. The current amendments allow increased density by right in all neighborhoods and doesn't give adequate consideration to difference between the neighborhoods. Issues like narrow streets, small lots, parking that...
We can't hear. Move your microphone up.
Is that better? Okay. Issues related to narrow streets, small lots, and increased density can create multiple issues, including concerns about parking. I ask you to consider a hospital worker coming home late at night, having to park down the street from their property and walk to their house. And we do this and tell them that if they're concerned about safety, they can pay for parking lot on their own property, but we're not going to ask the developers to consider any parking accommodations. This is just one of the concerns related to the current density allowances. And while staff rightly points out relatively low numbers of conversions are likely to occur, that does not really address the concerns of individuals who face uncertainty and are being stripped of the right to have any input by making these provisions by right. This gives us results such as we are now seeing in the Crystal Spring area. We talk about the need for affordable housing, and it is a desperate need. But while there is that clear need, this development destroys historic and affordable housing, replaces it with higher density and more expensive housing, and in the process, displaces the residents. How can it be right that this can happen without allowing for any input from the neighborhood, the residents of the properties, and the citizens? And I also want to correct an implication that has been throughout this discussion, which is that the zoning that existed previously is a direct descendant of redlining and segregation, which were reprehensible practices. The RS single-family zoning came into being in the late 1990s and early 2000s and was approved by the City Planning Commission, the Planning Department, and City Council, yes. And that was due to documented concerns that there were haphazard conversions occurring that were impacting neighborhoods. So we're here now with this resolution. I hope council may clear to staff that the study should bring alternatives to address legitimate concerns and not just bring back the same proposal. In the past, we were asked to do that by city representatives, but when we did come prepared to discuss those, we were told there wasn't time to make any changes and they would not be considered. So now, we're here almost a year and a half later, still facing lawsuits, legal issues, and having to pay for the city many thousands of taxpayer dollars. You, the members of council and city staff, have a choice. We can choose to change a course of conflict and legal battles to one of cooperation and compromise and develop proposals that allow options that don't completely ignore neighborhood concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stavola. Okay, our next two speakers.
Lawrence Morgan and Barbara Dirk.
Welcome, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you. Thank you. My name's Lawrence Morgan. As you heard, I live in the greater Dialley neighborhood, and I'd like to thank the council for considering Nick's initiative to readdress the zoning, the zoning changes from last year. Let me tell you a story. We're not Roanoke natives, my wife and I, but when we moved here, one of the things that struck us were the vibrant and active neighborhoods, attractive neighborhoods in the city of Roanoke, places like Grandin Court, Raleigh Court, Old Southwest. People move, think about your own experience, people move into neighborhoods they feel comfortable in, but they don't expect those neighborhoods to change drastically, especially old, established neighborhoods. People have different needs. Some people love Old Southwest. I know a lot of people who lived in Raleigh Court, both great choices. But now, with the zoning changes, you've opened the possibility that multifamily units can be dropped in anywhere, including my neighborhood. There's a house in an adjoining lot sold last week. I have no idea what's going in there, and I have no control over it, and it's just one. That's just the first one. There's a whole street full of old people with these kind of large lots. I don't know what's going in there. But listen to the Roanoker's who told you last election that we didn't approve of this. We had no say in this, and it makes us uneasy. We don't know. How are neighborhoods going to change or into what? We urge you to give this serious consideration and return single-family zoning to the Roanoke zoning ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Welcome, Mr. Dirk.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Vice Mayor, members of council. This is the key that I gave you. Each of you have a key to the city because you are the ones that can unlock doors. And good morning to the city manager and city clerk and city attorney, because they work for you, and you are the ones that have the key. I'm speaking today about citizens' choice and art exhibits that people can vote on what they want to do and citizens' choice, and I'm saying to you that every day is a new day, and every day is a new beginning. Every day, people have a choice to be happy or sad. Every day, people have a choice to move forward with their lives or continue to stay where they have stalled. Florine Thornhill said, you don't need to move to live in a better place, and I truly believe that. And I also believe that there's no such thing as a free lunch. And I was at the Melrose Plaza, and it was fantastic, that the federal government gave $10 million to that, the state gave $750,000. I don't know how much Roanoke City Council gave, but I know that each of you have invested a lot of sweat and tears to make that project happen. People have a choice to clean up their streams, to share flowers in their garden. People have a choice to pick up the litter that they see. That for Melrose Plaza to be viable and to work, people are going to need to engage, not steal the shopping carts, to shop at the grocery store, to make sure they avail themselves at the wellness center and get their high school diplomas so they can get a good-paying job. Roanoke is also recognized as a welcoming city, and city staff has worked hard to make Roanoke an inclusive city and has received several recognitions for that respect. As a resident of Roanoke, as a Roanoke citizen, all of us need to reach out to our neighbors, to our friends, to our families, to people that we don't know, and let them know that they are welcome in Roanoke. I am a Roanoker. I am Roanoke proud. We, as people, have a choice. We can work together, or we can be divisive, as people are trying to divide us. They're trying to divide us according to neighborhoods, according to schools, according to jobs, according to how much we weigh, and I think that we all need to support our community, and people choose what is good in our community. Again, we are all Roanokers. We are Roanoke proud. We want to be part of the decision, so please listen to us. You have the key. Unlock the doors and let us in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dirk. Our next two speakers.
Frida Kathkar. And Am Patel.
Welcome, Ms. Kathkar.
Hi, I'm glad to be here. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I wanted to bring my concerns directly to city council. Back in 2023, city council approved a climate action plan that was incorporated into the 2020 to 2040 comprehensive plan, declaring a climate emergency and that we must take action for the climate emergency. After that happened, city council approved the zoning, this all-city zoning amendment, after being warned by countless citizens of the potential destruction that could happen. It has happened already. The Grandin Court neighborhood had nine acres of woodlands at the end of... The Grandin Court neighborhood had nine acres of woodlands at the end of Oak Crest. Without notice to any neighbors, even the adjacent neighbors, they destructed that entire woodlands, not for multifamily housing, but for individual housing lots. And now the street's too narrow. And they're talking about widening the road, where we have huge, great oak trees. This is unacceptable. This is no time to study. This is time for action. We have a new city council. We have new management. And we need the management to follow the comprehensive plan that I and so many other citizens worked on, that's supposed to be a guideline for 20 years. We're only five years in, and it's been ignored in horrible ways. That is going to be irreplaceable. The amount of harm that could continue to be if you don't take immediate action could be catastrophic, affecting your bond rating, the ability for people to get insurance in our city. It's already affected our flood resiliency. This is not good. It's too late for those nine acres. But it's not too late to make a difference now. There was no public hearing when that happened. The neighbors are outraged about where that is. The wildlife scattered, not knowing where to go. The theme for this year's soil-water conservation things is habitat is our home. And Roanoke City destroyed it. On my watch, my responsibility. I came and warned you all about it, as well as many other people. Please take immediate action now and repeal it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cathcart. Mr. Patel, welcome.
Hi. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and esteemed members of City Council. My name's Om Patel, and I'm here behalf of Strong Towns Roanoke, a nonpartisan group of residents working to create a more financially resilient, inclusive, and thriving Roanoke. Our group includes members from Wusena, Raleigh Court, Pedalsafe, and Bragg. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with these organizations or neighborhood associations. And they're people who deeply care about how the city grows. Unfortunately, not all of us can make it at the times we all have work, I understand. But we just wanted to kind of go in a different angle for today. We wanted to thank you for your leadership in ending exclusive single-family zoning. This reform doesn't eliminate single-family homes, but it simply makes room for more housing options like duplexes, townhomes, small apartments, and ADUs, accessory dwelling units. In particular, they let older age, older adults age in place, specifically in terms of ADUs. They help homeowners earn extra income, and they provide much-needed options for young people, caregivers, and essential workers. And this isn't just me saying it. It's UC Berkeley in 2021. Before this reform, 91% of Roanoke's residential land, I believe 13,300 out of the 14,600 acres, was zoned for just one house per lot. And this is based on City of Roanoke 2024's report. That's not flexibility. That's a bottleneck. Let's build, let's let the builders build. Don't give our housing market a sedative. Cities like Portland show this works. After they legalized middle housing, new homes sold for $250,000 to $300,000 less than traditional single-family builds. And more than 1,480 were added to the housing stock. This is by the City of Portland 2024, was their report. This is also a fiscal win. Walkable, compact developments generate four to 10 times more tax revenue per acre and costs about one-third less to maintain in sprawl. And this is by Smart Growth America 2013. And zoning isn't neutral. Single-family zoning has long and well-decimated legacy of exclusion, which I believe Tony had mentioned upon himself. And this reform helps us correct that, ensures more people can live closer to jobs, schools, and opportunity, as highlighted in the Cambridge University Press on 2020. And at Strong Towns, we meet biweekly. We'd love to invite you all, council members, staff, anyone, to join us informally for a monthly beer with--
You can go ahead and finish.
Okay. Yeah, we'd love to just invite you guys, if you guys want to grab a beer with us in our meetings. It would be informal. No speeches, just neighbors talking about the future of the city. We hope you'll join us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Would it be, would it be okay if I gave a bingo card to you guys?
Sure. Just hand it to the clerk over here.
Good question. When is your meeting?
Great question. I forgot to bring that up. I kind of got thrown off at the red light. It's on the 14th. It's next Thursday, not this upcoming one, at 7:00 PM at Twister Track, if you guys are interested. We do have Chris. I think you guys love Chris Chinum. Or if you don't, because I know he retired, so I know you guys might have-- but anyway, they're grass.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. Madam Clerk, next two speakers.
Michael Jambola. And Garrett Robinson.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm a dad who likes to ride his bike around, and I wanted to buy a house. I also wanted to speak up for the people who today can't afford homes. When I rode my bike here, I rode past the least of these ministries by several people who don't currently have homes. And I would love it if it were not as difficult to build low-income housing. In a world where more single-family housing exists, it's harder for people to buy homes, and it's more expensive. So I would encourage you to not change what you just did, to not, well, you continue to allow a single-family housing wherever people want it, but to also allow other forms of housing. So currently, laws do a lot to protect high-income housing, and I understand that should be protected as well. But I would also encourage it to be, encourage you to make it easier for people to build low-income housing. And to not, if those of you are familiar with what's called the tyrant's veto, to not allow neighbors to control what you do on your property. If you would like to have a mother-in-law suite, I think it should be allowed, and no one should make that illegal. And I know you want the best for our city. I'm not angry. We're all happy urbanists at Strong Towns. So please make it easier to continue to build low-income housing. I'm for policies that give greater freedom. What a gift to have duplexes, triplexes, other forms of starter homes. Narrower streets, what a gift to-- people have a harder time speeding on narrower streets. So thank you. Please keep them more narrow. Make it safer for me to bike. I want my kids to grow up with their dad. So I want to speak for those as well, as I said, who cannot afford. And so please remember, when you vote, think of those people on the street today, if that helps you. If it doesn't help you as much, think of people like me. So when we moved to Roanoke, my wife and I could not afford a house. We could not find a house. I'm a professional counselor. I'm a minister, and I lead a nonprofit. My wife's a nurse. But we had some difficulties paying off medical debt, and we just, there was no, there were no starter homes we could afford. So think of people like me. Please vote to not restrict our city to the constraints of single-family zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson, welcome.
Thank you. I'm too tall for a mic, so I'm just going to talk, talk a little louder. My name's Garrett Robinson. I'm a resident here in the city of Roanoke. I'm also a huge environmentalist, so I do not think that there needs to be a dichotomy between caring about the environment and our zoning policies in the city. I also, most of my background has been spent working in affordable housing in nonprofits. I know how difficult it can be to both buy a home, but also working with people who are struggling to buy a home or struggling to afford rent or struggling to afford repairs on those homes. That being said, I'm here to speak in favor of the zoning changes that were made last year. Mixed-use zoning creates a more equitable community by offering a variety of housing at different price points. It makes it possible for people of all ages, incomes, and backgrounds to live in the same neighborhood. By allowing gentle densities such as duplexes and ADUs, we open the door to teachers, service workers, young families, and seniors who might otherwise be priced out. This kind of inclusive development helps prevent displacement, supports local businesses, and strengthens the social fabric of our city. Everyone deserves to live in a safe, vibrant, and walkable Roanoke. I know that some residents are worried about growth, about property values, about parking, about changes to neighborhood character. Those concerns are valid, and they should be heard and discussed. However, we cannot go backwards on these issues. We need to move forwards. And to move forwards with intentionality and thoughtfulness is how this should be done. You know, reading, I read through the City Council Agenda Report from last year when the zoning changes were made, and I was so incredibly encouraged by the theme of equity for all residents in our city. It talked about leading, community healing, about breaking the cycles of poverty, about ensuring affordable and accessible housing options are available in all neighborhoods. Those are beautiful priorities. Those are things that we should be working towards. That is the Roanoke that I want to live in, and that's why I would encourage you not to repeal or change the zoning ordinances as they were passed last year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Allison Blanton and Diane Ziegler.
Welcome, Ms. Blanton.
Hello. Thanks for having me today. And I'm here today on behalf of the Roanoke Valley Preservation Foundation to support Councilman Hagan's request to direct the city to re-study the zoning amendments as they were passed in 2024. We totally support the idea of more affordable housing and understand that it is very much needed, and we need more equitable housing. We are not against that at all. We are just basically concerned about the potential for the increased density that's so drastic, to have the potential to make the land more valuable for redevelopment than the actual historic buildings that are on there and therefore encourage demolition of some of the historic buildings in our neighborhoods. Roanoke's historic neighborhoods are some of its most valuable assets. They help to create community by having a sense of place that promotes connectivity between people, both to each other and to the past. And that's an important part of the quality of life that Roanoke can offer. Now, last year when these were passed, many people said, "Oh, it's very unlikely that houses will be demolished to allow for this new development." Well, that has, actually has already happened, as people have mentioned, in the Crystal Spring and South Roanoke neighborhood with the demolition of the four houses on Richelieu Avenue. Now, these houses are at the gateway to this neighborhood, and new construction there with the higher density really has the potential to change the character of the very center of this neighborhood. So we really do want to see that the city look at continuing to promote this new development of housing that's both affordable and equitable, but also have provisions in there that would help to not encourage demolition by the increased density. There might be ways this could be done through either using the special use permitting process or rezoning applications that already exist, or possibly even looking at having the demolition of historic buildings that are over 50 years old or in a National Register district require additional review and approval by the Planning Commission or the Architecture Review Board. We just think that there, that what the zoning amendments that are there, the intention is good, but it just needs to be tweaked. It should not be a one-size-fits-all by right across the city without any consideration for the historic context and what might be lost just to provide for new development. So again, we encourage you all to re-study this. We think that there is some potential to both accomplish the goals of increased housing while also integrating preservation as a factor in that, rather than having it be something that promotes demolition. So again, you all should receive a letter by email today that better outlines our position. But I appreciate the opportunity to speak today and hope that we can come out with something that's even better. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blanton. Welcome, Ms. Ziegler.
Thank you. I have some exhibits, if that's okay, or one exhibit per person.
Yeah, if you'll just hand it to the manager or clerk over here. They'll come around to us. Thank you.
My exhibit kind of speaks for itself if you have to go through it all, but I'll read it anyway. This is a copy of the tax map numbers on 2300 block of Roslin Avenue. I'm here to represent many people in South Roanoke and other areas who are affected by the zoning. This is a South Roanoke street. It's a small street. It's about three-quarters of a block. If you can see the tax map ending in 13 and 14, a builder was just able to buy the house on 14, and he's going to tear it down. And he has the ability to build nine units there. Again, this is a small street. So what does that mean for the street and the density? We're going to need about 18 more parking spaces, plus visitor parking on this short street. We're going to need 18, if you say, two spaces per unit, more garbage and recycle cans. And the new regulations open us up to even more crowding. So if you take a look at the bottom here, there's a church. We already have problems with parking on that street. And there's an apartment building. We have problems there. And if you look at number 15, I own that. I can tear that down and put six more units. This street can't take all of this. It's just, from a density point of view, it's outrageous and sad and shocking. I understand what you guys did, and I'm the first person to help poor people. Ask anybody. But this is the density. And so I'm requesting that we, number one, either return to the former zoning requirements or return of the zoning requirements allowing neighbors to be notified and have input into what can be built. Because so far, this has been a builder's dream and a neighborhood's nightmare. If you take a look at the units on the corner of Avonham, they put the new units there. They're getting $2,400 a month, poor unit. It's a builder's dream. So that's what I have to say, representing South Roanoke and other neighborhoods similar. Please help us out and take a look and do a little changing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Dwayne Howard and Essie Mans.
Welcome, Mr. Howard.
Thank you. And city manager, it's a beautiful job that the City Council improvements. I would strongly ask you to do something about the speaker system in this chamber. It's simply deplorable. Mayor, I've hardly heard you. Maybe my hearing is getting worse, but it seemed like there was fluctuation in the microphone when some people were speaking. I don't know if it's, what the problem is. But I certainly would ask you all to address it because everyone wants to hear what the valuable words that the speakers have to say and your valuable response. I, you all know I live in southeast, and I want to address this wolf dog issue briefly. My life has been a living hell in southeast between the dogs and the slum lords. And recently, we had eight dogs running loose on my street. Eight dogs. Eight dogs. This is insane. These waltz dogs that got out and attacked someone, that could have been a child or another small dog. I can't walk my five-and-a-half-pound little dog on my street anymore for fear of being attacked. There's so many loose dogs. Animal control rules are inefficient. They don't address it. Once, this thing with the waltz dog should be an open and closed case. Those dogs have gotten out, they have attacked, and are you going to wait till a child or someone gets mauled by it? It simply needs to be addressed, and I know that you're all going to look into it. I don't know what you said at council chambers this morning. I want to thank Barbara and Tony and Frida. You know, we're blessed to have neighborhood leaders like this or outspoken people that are wanting to protect their neighborhoods and keep them safe for the improvements, and this zoning change just would be a horrendous thing if you don't change it back to the way it was. We already have too many cars. Look at Oakland Boulevard. They narrowed it down to one narrow lane. They put, was someone explain to me why they put in a slanted curb to, now cars can't park on the street, so the city made it easier for them to drive up on the sidewalk, parking on the sidewalk. I mean, it's just ridiculous, and it needs to be looked at, and it needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Welcome, Dr. Mans.
Thank you. Power of the Lord be with you all, all of these beautiful people within this assembly. I am one of those people that have learned very heavily that if the mountain won't come to Mohammed, then if Mohammed won't come to the mountain, my city won't come to me. I gotta come to you. And due to health issues, I can't do all of that greatness right now, but I want you all to know that way back in 2012, my city came to my neighborhood, decimated my property, and lumped my land, and God bless you, Mayor, because he's the only one that came out there at some point to look at it. What I have is a dip in my front yard that could be labeled the pool of the Roanoke City. When I moved to 1826 10th Street Northwest, the road was already there and leveled. They decimated us so much that my neighbors who served this country had died last year, but paid $5,000 a year to lift sewer out of his basement. Our water is filthy and undrinkable, but we pay taxes. A neighbor that worked for the city on land, Mr. Pentimini, bought it in a weed. Nobody ever told him to cut it, or he had insider trading. It is now a tree of heaven, and it is decimating and killing off me and my property. It kills. It carries a lanternfly. But my city, God bless y'all, y'all really don't care, but I know you love me because you ain't doing nothing for me. And I thank y'all for standing here and listening to me, but whether you like it or not, this was my property when you came along. A sidewalk already existed at 1826. When you put the road in, you dropped my sidewalk, and I got papers to show. Because I'm disabled, you were coming back and giving me a concrete driveway that was already there, going to the back of my property, but I got lost in y'all's drawer of throwaway. That don't mean I don't love you. I just get fed up with people that know better. Northwest is decimated. Property money was sent in to restore our homes. We get nothing. We get no beautification. Out of all of that, I'm going to walk away today, letting you know how much I love you. Whether you like it or not, God has not decided. It's time for me to go, and he's the only one can decide that. So, do the right thing. Y'all don't work for block number 10, Tu'akapaka. You work for all the citizens. Come to the neighborhood. Do what Joe Cobb has done since he got here. Come to the neighborhood and see what's really going on, and then show me some action. 2012, what year is it? They're gone. Can I still count? God bless you.
Thank you, Dr. Mans.
And I got a special card for the City Council and Joe Cobb. That one's about the decimation of my grandson's property they promised to fix, and when they saw his skin, they decided they didn't know. Thank you.
Thank you.
God bless everybody. If it was any good.
David Bowers and Adele Carlos.
Welcome, Mr. Bowers.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. Respectfully and with a sense of humor, I was hoping to once again become a member of the council to vote to repeal and put to rest the new zoning law back in January. Now, I congratulate Councilman Nick Hagan for having the guts to address the issue with this council now, and I want to thank you, Nick. Keeping your campaign promises when elected is an important characteristic for a public servant to follow. The new ordinance does not, the new law, does not protect single-family homes and does not preserve the character of our residential neighborhoods. As Mr. Morgan said earlier in this meeting, people live in a certain house because they like and can afford it, but also because they like the neighborhood the way it is. Your next-door neighbors can now quickly transform their home into a chopped-up four-to-eight-unit apartment dwelling, which will be automatic under the new law. There goes the neighborhood. Your single-family homes and quiet neighborhoods are threatened. Your neighbors already, already, or earlier had, excuse me, earlier had the right to try to chop up their homes into multifamily housing, but under the old law, they, the neighbor would have to petition for a rezoning variance. Legal notice of the variance was then given to all the neighbors, and at a public hearing, the neighbors could have come to the meeting and opposed the chopped-up plan. The Board of Zoning Appeals would then likely have turned down the proposal and denied the neighbors a chopped-up renovation. Their house would remain a single-family dwelling, and the, a character of the neighborhood would be preserved the way it was. That's under the, under the old law. Under the old law, neighbors had a say in the preservation of their residents before any chopping up. The new law would, the new law ends that requirement of public notice and public hearing. Roanoke City Council, I ask you to repeal the new rezoning law. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Welcome, Ms. Carlos.
Good afternoon, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor Maguire, and members of city council and our city manager. Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you to Nick Hagan for bringing this proposal I started out with a nice typed-out piece of paper, and now it looks like this, which has complete, I scratched out all my notes, I did everything and changed everything, so I'm kind of flying with what I feel right now. First of all, I'd like to say that the last election, the people of Roanoke elected candidates because of this zoning issue. They elected candidates who were opposed or looking to change or at least revise or take a look at the zoning because they realized how bad it really is. And the members of city council that did that are very, were very grateful that you are sticking to your guns and want to do something about at least bringing this to the table. We hope that the result will be in our favor because the people who elected them, as well as people who have signed the petition, as well as the people who have, the lawsuits against the city, and all the people who have shown opposition to this, really do believe that this zoning is a major issue and needs to be revised and/or revoked so that we can have our neighborhoods back. Zoning stabilizes property values in communities. It ensures residential areas remain free from disruptive developments like high-rise apartments or commercial centers. Consistency provides a stable tax base. Property values rely on predictable surroundings. Without zoning, a single inappropriate development could devalue nearby homes. Uncontrolled development can result in a reduction of the tax base. Zoning protects historic districts and provides aesthetic value to the city. By controlling development density, zoning prevents excessive traffic congestion. Our streets can't handle the extra houses and residents that they're trying to put in. Mainly, people need to be able to have a say in what is going on in their neighborhoods, and that would be only by rescinding this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's the last speaker. All right. Thank you all for signing up and speaking today. That's our last speaker. We appreciate all of your time and effort and insights. We'll now move on to our consent agenda, item number four. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by members of the city council and will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired, an item can be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. I'll entertain a motion and second on approval of our consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan and Mr. Nash. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez-Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Maguire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to our regular agenda, we have no public hearings today or petitions and communications, so we'll move into reports of city officers and our city manager, Ms. Valmarie Turner. And we do have two briefings today, and I'll invite our city manager to present those.
Thank you, Mayor Cobb and Vice Mayor Maguire and members of council. The first briefing, our finance director, Margaret Lindsay, will present this.
Ms. Lindsay, Ms. Lindsay, before you, before you go on, I just wanted to comment on something Mr. Howard said earlier about the sound. We will work to make sure that the sound is restored appropriately in here. I know when we were doing all of the renovations, every bit of sound was removed out of the back room and reinstalled by Hartman and Sons, so there may be some issues because of that disruption, but we will work to make sure that the sound quality is where it needs to be. So, thank you. Ms. Lindsay?
Thank you, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor Maguire, and members of council. I have for you today our very, very preliminary June information. For those who would like to view it, if they haven't already, it is presented with the agenda for today's meeting. As always, our first look at information is revenue, and again, and will sound like a broken record today, there are a number of items that are not here yet because we have not done our year-end accruals, and by that, since most people are not accountants, that means we look at everything that comes in in July and August and say, does it belong in the new fiscal year or does it belong in the old fiscal year, fiscal year '25? And a good example of that is our sales tax revenue. That is a two-month lag, so the money that comes in in July, which is in, is actually May, and the money that will come in August is actually June. So, those get picked up and pulled back, and that has not been, of course, done. Of course, August information is not here yet. I have spoken with our treasurer, Ms. Burkett, and as far as she's aware, all of our July monies are posted. They're just posted in the new fiscal year, so we have to look through those and do our parsing in one year and parsing into the other, and that will be a process over the next couple of months. I do want to point out a couple items. Franchise fees are done for the year. They do, they are not an accrual. That is on a budget of $400,000, and they came in at less, at $291,000 in round numbers. I can tell you that for fiscal '26, we did downgrade that budget estimate to be more in line with the last several years. Then also, I wanted to comment on bank stock. I had a conversation with our commissioner's office because that clearly has not performed up to the budget as well. I do not know for certain that there isn't some in July, but so far, I have not seen any. That's still to be determined. And Mr. Taylor, the chief deputy, indicated that we've had a number of banks that are down significantly in what they report. It seems to those deposits, which this tax is based, have not shown up in other branches, I'm sorry, in other banks, so they could have either moved out of the area entirely or moved to credit unions, which are not similarly taxed. He indicated that he would believe that there's still some fallout from the BB&amp;T SunTrust merger into Truist and from also some Wells Fargo branch closings. There is a new bank, the National Bank of Blacksburg, and welcome to them down on Franklin Road, and they have not hit the filing requirement yet, so there's hope certainly for there. So, we will certainly monitor '26 and see how that continues to play out. In our other non-tax revenue, just a couple of things. You can see that our grant-in-aid Commonwealth has a budget of $98.9 million. That was one of the items that with our June, second June meeting, where we increased certain revenue lines, that got an increase for a couple of things, primarily around our human services, our CSA monies that we got a supplemental award for. So, the budget is completely up to date for that measure back in June. However, the money's not here yet because it's on a reimbursement basis, and again, that will run through July, August, so no worries that we're sitting at 79.4 versus 98.9. I can tell you that the PPTRA from the state is in in July, so we will be adding 7.4 million to our 79.4 during this accrual process. Excuse me. On to some expenditures for you. Again, this is nothing to even remember after today. We have a number of steps that we do every year at year-end, and just by one way of an example, every year as part of the budget, there's an item called extended illness, but it's one item, and it covers the whole city, and we best estimate that based on prior information, prior year trends. But then, at this time of year, we go look in every department whose department had extended illness pay expense, and we parse out until we exhaust the one line and restore budget to the departments that had the need in this fiscal year. We haven't quite gotten to that piece of work yet, so my point in all of that is the current budget with amendments, which also, of course, reflects June's measure of the second meeting, will probably move again because we just have other things that we have to do and can only really do once a year. And then, in that same fashion, we have invoices that are flying in for us to pay, some related to '25 and some new related to '26. So, we work through all of that, again, through the end of August, and then begin to really see numbers stand still, is the way I like to think of it, at least hopefully they do. Lastly, my standard, and I know this is a little hard and a little small to see here in the chamber, this is our overtime wages, and again, from the measure in June, we were able to improve the budget throughout the city general fund to 6.1 million, and so we are still over in total for overtime wages at the moment, and of course, not final either, by 1.5 million, but that's certainly significant. either, by 1.5 million, but that's certainly significantly better. And last, but not least, is the same type of information for temporary wages. I did have a conversation with the chief deputy, Colonel Young, with the sheriff's department. I was curious about the temporary wages for the sheriff, for court services, is that particular unit, and they have 14 positions that are in that temporary, all of which I would believe are quite necessary, two for civil process, non-court security, a fingerprints person, a background investigator, and a community event coordinator. They're all part-time, and therefore, they are categorized in temporary wages. Yes, sir?
I just wanted to get some clarification as to what temporary wages meant.
That's a very good question, because to me, it means someone has come in and is going to do six weeks of work. That's not necessarily what we're using it for here, and there may also be some variations between the departments. So, for the sheriff's department, that's where his part-time people live. Temporary could still be someone coming to provide additional services for the city attorney's office, but it's on a limited basis, but they are employees. So, these are not folks from temporary agencies, such as we have some use of with our solid waste. I went looking for those because solid waste is not on this list. They're appropriately in professional fees because it is a service coming to us, they're not our employees.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And as always, if there are questions, I'm happy to try and answer or make notes, or if you think of them later, I'm happy to have them pass through Ms. Turner's office as well.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsay.
Thank you.
Further questions from council? All right. We appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, our next briefing will be done by Douglas Jackson, who serves as the Arts and Cultural Coordinator, and he will present the past fiscal year accomplishments in the annual public artwork plan for the Roanoke Arts Commission.
Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor McGuire, members of council, city manager Turner, Attorney Spencer. I'm going to start by introducing our chair, one of Roanoke's longest-playing musicians, William Penn.
Thank you. That is an intro. I'd like to thank you all, city council, for letting us present our annual report for the Roanoke Arts Commission. We are required by policy to report to council what our plans are for the next year, so that you may see how we're using the money that you give us, and we like it, okay? I'm happy to be here and to share with you what we have done over the past year. As chairman, I am grateful and happy for the other 14 people that work on this commission. They're all really engaged in what we're doing, and with their help, you'll see what I'll be doing when Douglas makes his report. But these people are extremely engaged in what we're doing, and they help make this community work by their commitment to civic communities, civic commitments, a strong advocacy for the arts, and the love for this community. So, with that, I'll give you back to Doug. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. Thank you for your service.
I got to know William when I, when I was serving on the Arts Commission, and that's one of the real joys of this commission, and I do want to ask any commission members who are here to stand up. I know we've got some who had to leave, but we've got some still in the room.
Thank you all.
All right. So, we have four committees. For everyone on the Arts Commission, they're required to be on at least one committee. The cool thing, too, is that you don't have to be on the Arts Commission to be on one of the committees. Our collections, our placemaking, and our planning committees are open to other people as well in the community. It's a great way to get to know the Arts Commission. So, I want to go through the work that's happened this year by committee, and the first committee is the Collections Committee, and they oversee and care for the art in our public spaces. That's both inside on the walls of the municipal building and other buildings, libraries, et cetera, and then in sculpture out on the streets. So, this year, we have six new works in Elmwood Park, and there's one more that's coming. I got the date today, it's on August 22nd. That theme is Larger Than Life, so you can go out and see an oversized toothbrush, an oversized woodpecker. We also had the Cover Story out here in the hallway. It's still here until September 5th, and that was a two-dimensional project in partnership with Roanokeer Magazine. We did a domestic violence embroidery exhibit downstairs, and then we had eight weeks of discussion around the book Pilgrim at Tinker Creek, and, which was really, really a nice discussion, and that has launched the next project of the Collections Committee. We have 30 artists who are ready to be inspired by that book to create work that is focusing on their contemplative practice, the community around them, and their connection to nature, and that will open on October 20th in, on this floor. We did a courthouse youth exhibition, and that was working with young people in the community, at the detention center. We had kids at West End Center who were involved in that, and we're going to continue that as well. We're also looking at some quilt exhibits this year, so stay tuned for that. This committee is really focused on caring for the work, bringing new work in, rotating work around the, around the, the buildings, and it's, and they have a lot of fun when they do it. And so, you can see, see here the stiletto that's out on Elmwood Park right now. We're really proud to loan works by the artist Tony Hale to the Taubman, four works we loaned to them for an exhibit this year. And we also took some new donations in. So, you'll see the sunflowers by Patrick Branch that is now hanging in the mayor's suite. You'll, we brought in a gift from Charlene Graves, one of our Arts Commission members, that's African mosaic, and it's hanging in the Gainesboro Library. Our funding committee is really busy. Now, they screen all the applications for arts and cultural funding, and this year, they worked really hard, 300, and worked hard in two ways. One, accepting applications and reviewing them and awarding, making awards for next year, but also in monitoring the grants and the grantees that apply to us, who give us quarterly reports, submit pictures, et cetera. This year, they're, they've awarded $300,000, and you approved that at a recent meeting, and they also have set aside some money. We're going through a planning process now, and they've set aside some money for some mini-grants, and that's money from the Percent for Art Fund, which I'll talk about a little bit later. But here are just some images of the programs. All we fund are programs, not operational support for organizations, and these are things that make our community vibrant, welcoming to visitors, and give us some real joy as residents. Our placemaking committee, the Daisy Art Parade falls under the placemaking committee, and we had a terrific year this year with that, and had lots of, lots of fun. We had 40 groups who came out representing neighborhoods, elementary schools, senior groups, and the, what we envision of that is a celebration of neighborhoods, where we all get together, people are working together on art, feeling what it feels like to connect in a different way, because your, your conversations are really different when you're elbow-deep in paper mache. Then, our Arts Connect Neighborhoods catalog, and there was a great commercial, thank you, Vice Mayor McGuire, for that earlier, and we've had over 100 activities that we pay for to happen in neighborhoods, and those are, we hope, are connecting people in a different way, and we also hope that they are helping the, the neighborhood groups take their next step. We see it as a capacity-building activity. If we can get engaged and say, okay, you want to do an event, what are your goals for the event, and then how can, how can we help you meet those goals? Our placemaking chair, wanted to make sure I showed you a work that happened, this was just about a month ago, in Raleigh Court, where neighbors got together and said, we want to celebrate that our houses are turning 100 years old. So, they had a block party, Roanoke Ballet Theater came out through the catalog and taught them how to do the Charleston in the middle of the street, and Lynn Donahue, a terrific artist, had people sign up to do a door hanging, they can hang it on the front of their house, and everyone has a, has a star in it, but each one is their own unique design. And that was just a really lovely event, but we've got activities that, including performing arts as well, as well as visual arts. And then, let's see, we have 22 artists and residents that have been working with us this year. A lot of those are attached to the Daisy Art Parade, so when you see a neighborhood getting together, often there's an artist helping them realize what's possible and to get started. We've had seven, seven murals completed in partnership with the city. A lot of those were in partnership with the private entities, and then we also sponsored Bus Roanoke Down on the, on the market this summer. Coming up this next year, and we've already seen the, the new, the new catalog, we're really excited, we've got 60 activities in the catalog, and 26 of those are new. You know, in the first round of the catalog, we put $150,000 into the community. These are small, the artists who are doing the projects are small businesses, and we really, worked really careful to keep them, keep those dollars local. We want to do five new murals this year, so, so keep an eye out on the streets for that. We'll have 10 artists and residents working alongside us in neighborhoods, and we're about to do, in partnership with transportation, six to 10 signal box murals. And expect some, some larger projects coming. Well, and on this weekend, we're going to get started painting the Washington Park Pool House mural. That's going to be happening with the, with projects that are planned, such as the, the Main Street Bridge, the Eureka Park Community Center, those are going to have artistic aspects as well. And then, we're working with Parks and Recreation on, on some things on Mill Mountain. And I mentioned Parks and Recreation, I should mention the libraries, I should mention the public works, I should mention everybody across the city. This is a very small office, but everything we do is in partnership, and, and the team across the city is terrific to work with. And then, here are some pictures of the placemaking, placemaking activities from the Daisy Art Parade, the murals. There are three new bus shelters that are artistic bus shelters done by Molly Kernan in southeast Roanoke, and those celebrate pollinators, and there will be four more shelters going in as well. And then, our, our planning committee, our last Arts and Cultural Plan was in 2011, and we've started the beginning of this year to undergo the thinking around our next Arts and Cultural Plan. John Cornetthwaite is doing an amazing job. Sometimes it feels like he works for the city. He's putting so much work into this, and it's not just work, it's his knowledge and real expertise in this matter. We've trained over 50 artists and neighborhood leaders in story circles. Story circle comes out of theater, but it's a way of very intentionally listening, and that's embedded into the planning process, and we think it's embedded into everything we're doing. As we start to do something, can we listen? Can we just stop and connect over a story? And it's been really powerful, and so we're in this phase now where we're out in community, in the community, doing these listening, these story circles. We have a steering committee who's guiding this process, and we've identified our core values. And then, we're going to continue the story circles through the fall, do more listening, there'll be a survey out. We're doing this all in-house with John's leadership, but I will have to say that we have been in a planning posture over the past five years or so. Everything we're doing is we're trying these new activities and working with artists and, and really experimenting. We're getting feedback, and we keep growing. So, really, what we think is going to happen is this is going to reinforce the work that we're doing. And there's the, there's the steering committee and one of the story circles, and I want to go through the language with you because I think it's, it's pretty powerful. "Our mission is to create a plan that reflects our community's commitment to arts and culture and charts a path to broader access, stronger infrastructure, and meaningful local impact. The Roanoke Arts and Cultural Plan envisions a vibrant and connected future for Roanoke where creativity thrives, participation runs deep, and the arts strengthen our sense of community while supporting personal and economic growth. We're committed to creating a plan that reflects the spirit, stories, and aspirations of the people who call this city home, and to ensuring that arts and culture remain central to shaping our region's next decade. We envision a Roanoke where creativity builds bridges, culture lives in every neighborhood, and the arts help shape a future we design together." And our values are just really the way we want to continue acting. It's, it's not, it's not a, a list of nouns, but it's a list of actions that we want to do, both in this process and in, in everything we do. We want to bring people together, we want to make space for everyone, help them imagine what's possible, celebrate along the way, and nurture what's next. And then, finally, the executive committee, they pick up some pieces and really steward the Arts, the Arts Commission, planning meetings, working together on projects such as the Youth Poet, Poet Laureate, our Art by Bus Project. We actually, we bring together the Arts and Culture Organizations every month, and we do that in partnership with our colleagues at the Roanoke Cultural Endowment, and so we have representation from the executive committee with that, too. Every Monday, people can get a newsletter in their inbox first thing Monday morning, and they can sign up at roanokearts.org/connect. This year, we put together two NEA applications, so we're busy trying to bring additional dollars in as well. And this year, we launched the It's Here Strategy, which is the Arts and Culture Organizations collectively saying that it's here in Roanoke where you can achieve anything you want to do. You don't have to go anywhere else, and the arts and, arts and culture can help us get there. And our tagline is that we are creating every day, creating every day the place we want to be. And that's some of the, some of the activities under the executive committee. And then, finally, I just want to give you a sense of the, the funding for this. You know, the Percent for Art Fund, 1% of many capital projects goes to support the arts. Often, it goes into those, into those projects, but they don't have to go into those projects. We've also been really aggressive with the National Endowment for the Arts, and over the last five years, have gotten $420,000 from the National Endowment for the Arts. That landscape has changed. In fact, we had money taken back under the current administration, but we're still committed to figuring out how to, how to bring more resources in, and, you know, writing a grant is a strategic space, and that's how we're creating a lot of this, a lot of this work and doing the thought. So, altogether, this is about a $400,000 budget, and the way we budget, it, we, we put things aside when we know we're going to do a project. We can carry over that budget. So, say, the Eureka Park Center, we don't spend that money this year, it just carries forward. We also budget $50,000 in there in case something happens and we need to really care for a lot of art. That's included in that budget as well. So, it's very conservative when you think of it that way, and we still have $200,000 left in the account, and, and we'll have plenty of work, plenty of work to do with what I just listed. But with that, I want to thank you. One of the great things, too, sometimes after we do a presentation like this, a council member comes up and says, oh, you know who you need to contact, you know who you need to engage in this project, and, and we, and we love that. So, so thank you for letting us take this time today and present to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Penn. Questions from council? I'm curious, Doug, do you happen to know how many pieces are in the city's art collection inventory?
Yeah, around 170 or so, and we don't really include the murals, although we have an online archive now, so you don't have to come down to the city even to look at a lot of the art. All of it is online. You can find it on our website, roanokearts.org, and there's also a mural inventory, not just the murals we've been in charge, in charge of. We had a terrific intern, Sierra Siv, who's worked on, who's gone around and inventoried murals that might even be inside a business, so we can kind of promote people to go inside and check out this, check out this mural. But about 170 kind of traditional works in the, in the collection.
And I, I really want to commend the Arts Commission on this. This is the second annual catalog, and please take one of these. This is the second annual catalog and please take one of these. This makes art so accessible and it helps build community, it helps connect neighbors. Thank you for sharing the story about the Raleigh Court neighbors. And, and the lovely thing is, as Doug mentioned, artists are small businesses. And this, this program not only supports them as small businesses and artists in our community, but it supports building connection in our neighborhood. So it's very collaborative, very partnership-based, and I think it's just an extraordinary program and, and I'm glad we're doing it in Roanoke. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Where can we get one?
Well, you should have one right in front of you.
Maybe I took yours.
You're always stealing us. Thank you.
See, they're so hot.
Excellent, yeah. Oh, wow. We started a row. Yeah. And, and we have, and I will have, we have these in the municipal building, but we also, I ran around this weekend, got them to the libraries. Everything is online as well. roanookarts.org/connect, or sorry, roanookarts.org/neighbors. And you can go right through the, an online catalog as, as well.
Yeah, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Mr. Jackson, I just want to say thank you very much. And to give a little bit of an example of, I think, the work that you're doing and how it's being noticed, I've been working over the summer with Roanoke Mountain Adventures and part of my job has been taking people out on the river, but I've also been going out on some of their bike rides. And the two things that people visiting from out of town over and over and over again rave about, to me, that I hear about are the greenway and our outdoor amenities and our connection to nature and the budding art scene. And it's been so successful that now Roanoke Mountain Adventures has a bike tour where Josh and Libby Nolan, people pay to go out on a bike tour and go around the city to look at the different murals that have come up in the last so many years. And it's really popular and people love it and it's a great way for people visiting or people who live here to see the city. They stop at breweries, grab a beer. So it's literally creating connections and contributing to the economic development, you know, climate in the city in so many different ways. So I, I notice the art all the time, so thank you, keep it coming, really support what you're doing in the Arts Commission and just really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other council members?
Oh, my God.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Thank you so much for what you do. And this is on a part-time job that you have?
It is.
I could only imagine if you were doing it full-time. I mean, full-time pay.
It, it, it does, it does feel like full-time, a lot of it, most, well, every week it feels like full-time.
It is a full-time job.
And I tell you, when I get a little beaten down and it happens, I come into a meeting and it's with the people, right? It could be a neighborhood meeting, it could be a meeting with the arts commissioners. And then you, you feel that energy, you go, that's why we're doing this, that's why we're doing this. So thank you.
We owe you. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. We appreciate it. We're going to move now into our items recommended for action. And item A is the approval for acquisition of real property parcels along Tinker Creek. We have one measure and ordinance and I'll entertain a motion and second on the ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Hagan and Mr. Nash. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance providing for the acquisition of real property rights needed by the city for five parcels located along Tinker Creek near Columbia Street Northeast and Palmer Avenue Northeast in connection with the flood mitigation project, authorizing city staff to acquire such property rights by negotiation for the city, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute appropriate acquisition documents, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Ms. Turner, do you have anything to add to this?
I do, thank you. Two property owners have offered to sell five parcels along Tinker Creek, presenting a strategic opportunity for flood mitigation. The acquisition supports the city's resilience goals, future greenway expansion, and could help lower flood insurance costs with funding available through the Stonewater utility.
That's excellent. Thank you. Any questions or comments by council? All right, Madam Clerk, I believe we're ready to call the roll.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Item B is the acceptance and appropriation of additional funds for the fiscal year 25 Greater Roanoke and New River Valley Small Business Development Center. We have one measure and ordinance and I'll entertain a motion and a second.
Move the ordinance.
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Nash and Ms. Powers. And Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of additional funds for the FY 2025 Greater Roanoke and New River Valley Small Business Development Center award issued by George Mason University from the United States Small Business Administration to the city of Roanoke, appropriating FY 2025 to 2026 grant funds detailed more fully infra, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute any necessary documents necessary to accept such funds and dispensing with the second reading of this title, excuse, excuse me, this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. And Ms. Turner?
Yes, these funds will support personnel and operational needs critical to serving small business in our region. And it will be accepted by the small business SBDC.
And I believe we have Ms. Heather Fay here today, she's the acting director, right? Come on up and, just in case everyone doesn't know who you are.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Cobb, and thank you for all the councilmen and Vice Mayor McGuire. Thank you for all the work that you're doing. Thank you, Ms. Turner and Ms. Webb and Ms. O'Brien and Ms. Ferguson for all of your help getting all this together, serving as the acting director for the Greater Roanoke and New River Valley Small Business Development Center. This funding is approved by the Small Business Administration. It comes through a continuing resolution, so you'll be seeing a lot of me as they're sending these little bite-sized pieces of funding for our calendar year of 2025, which spreads fiscal year '25 and '26. So we're happy to be here and excited to see what happens with our small businesses and our, and the city of Roanoke and beyond the area that we serve.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about this?
I'd just like to say thank you for what you do. I know when you first came, I was involved in that to help you get that set up. And you do incredible work to help especially our businesses that are just starting out to understand what their responsibilities are and give them, you know, the knowledge of what we, as here at the city of Roanoke, what we do to help them. So thank you for your work.
You're welcome, Councilwoman Powers. I appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C is the acceptance and appropriation of grant funds for city market awnings from the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. We have one measure and ordinance and I'll entertain a motion and second.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan and Mr. Volleson. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing acceptance of grant funds from the Commonwealth of Virginia, administered by the Virginia Department of Agricultural and Consumer Services Infrastructure Grant Funds for the fabrication and installation of new awnings on the historic Roanoke City Market, appropriating grant funds detailed more fully infra, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Ms. Turner, anything to add to this?
I do. These awnings are on, will be on the historic Roanoke City Market. And as you're aware, the current awnings are past their useful life. And we currently contract with downtown Roanoke, Inc. to oversee the market. And they will be handling the ordering and installation of the, and the logistics relative to this grant.
That's great news. Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I, I have one.
Yes, Mr. Nash?
You know, when I saw this was on our agenda, I tend to go down to the market because there's this little restaurant, like a little pop-up restaurant thing. And they do like that Mexican corn, it has like the cheese and everything on it. What is it called? Ariana orders it for me because I don't know. But, but I looked up and I've never looked up at the awnings that were there. They're tethered, it's holes in them. I was talking to some of the people that set up, they say when it rain, the rain drips down on them or the items that they're selling. And sometimes it's paintings and various pictures and artwork that needs to be protected from the elements. And so this is definitely needed. And I was like, oh, yeah, like, we need to vote on this.
That's great.
Yep.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Hagan?
Yeah, I want to just back up Councilman Nash's point. Absolutely thrilled to see this, you know, and especially from, excuse me, the Governor's Agricultural and Forestry Industries Development Fund. So very happy to see that as somebody who lives downtown.
Great, thank you. Ms. Webb, I think we're ready for the roll call.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the ordinance is adopted. And I believe we have a volunteer in Mr. Nash to help install those.
That's what I heard here.
Item D is the approval of the HUD 2025 through 2029 Five-Year Consolidated Plan and the 25-26 Annual Plan. We have one measure, a resolution, and I'll entertain a motion and second.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Volleson and Ms. Sanchez Jones. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution approving the city of Roanoke's 2025 to 2029 HUD Five-Year Consolidated Plan and 2025 to 2026 Annual Action Plan, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute all necessary documents pertaining thereto, and further authorizing the city manager or designee to submit such plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for final review and approval.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Ms. Turner, anything to add?
Yes, this is a continuation of the public hearing that we had. And Ms. Poplin's here to answer any questions that you may have about the item.
All right, any questions before she makes the effort to come to the podium? We're always happy to see you. All right, I think we're ready to vote.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the resolution is adopted. Thank you. Item E is the acceptance and appropriation of the Roanoke Fiscal Year '26 Safer Communities Program Grant. There's an ordinance and I need a motion and second, please.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan and Mr. Nash. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of the Safer Communities Program Grant made to the city of Roanoke by the Commonwealth of Virginia, Department of Criminal Justice Services, authorizing the execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city, appropriating fiscal year 2026 grant funds detailed more fully infra, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Ms. Turner?
We are extremely excited to accept this grant. And a special thank you goes out to Ms. Ferguson and all those who work with her. The Department of Criminal Justice Services is awarding the city $2.9 million and will support our ongoing efforts toward prevention and intervention, including staff and programmatic initiatives and costs. So we're excited. Ms. Ferguson really worked hard in order to get the application put together and submitted. So thank you, Ms. Ferguson.
Well, I want to commend Ms. Helen Ferguson for your work on this. I also want to commend the, our teams that are doing such extraordinary work in terms of prevention, intervention, and response in the community. Several of us had the opportunity this week to tour the rehabilitation of the Quads and Hut Gym at Norwich as well as the Norwich Rec Center Building. Both have been completely rehabilitated to house staff for prevention intervention services as well as the Champions of Change Boxing Program that is hosted by Roanoke Police Department and the Reset Program. The progress that these groups of people are making is extraordinary, even when we have difficult and tragic setbacks, as we've experienced recently, we continue to do the work. And so I want to commend them for that and commend you all for securing this grant for another year. Any questions or discussion from council? All right, I think we're ready to vote.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Item F is the approval of the recommended financial entity for line of credit debt facility for deferred maintenance capital projects. There is one measure, a resolution, and I'll entertain a motion and second.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Volleson and Mr. Nash. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution accepting the proposal of Atlantic Union Bank to issue bond anticipation notes for a drawdown line of credit in an amount not to exceed $25 million to fund various deferred maintenance capital improvement projects of the city of Roanoke, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute the necessary documents to accept such proposal upon certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, anything you'd like to add?
Yes, at our July 21st, 2025 council meeting, council authorized moving forward with the debt issuance of a line of credit to fund much-delayed capital maintenance such as, my favorite, elevators, boilers, HVAC, and that it's well past their useful life. Today's action item asks council to approve the recommended vendor, Atlantic Union Financial Entity, to provide this line of credit. Detailed information is included in the council item with all terms and conditions as noted by Mr. David Rose, our financial advisor on, at the July 21st meeting.
And I, I know during that briefing that Mr. Rose was pleased to share with us that nine institutions actually presented proposals, which is an extraordinary thing. And we're grateful to all of those organizations and grateful to Atlantic Union for, for their bid. Any other discussion by council? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the resolution is adopted. And now I'll turn to our city manager, Ms. Val Marie Turner, for comments.
I have one relatively long comment, but it is just, you know, just in awe of our magnificent team that we have here. I want to take a moment to offer a sincere thank you and to shine a light on some outstanding work that has taken place quietly but powerfully behind the scenes over the last two weeks. Everyone that's in the council chambers today, and if you thought to yourself, wow, it looks great, you're not alone. What you're seeing is the result of extraordinary team effort and it deserves recognition. To our general services team, especially facilities and custodial services, you're, you truly led the charge on transforming the city council chambers. You coordinated across departments, managed vendors and contractors, and kept an ambitious timeline on track. 14 days may sound short, but we know the planning and preparation behind this transformation began well before that. From finding a new home for the old seating to carpet removal, flooring abatement, painting, installing new floors and ceilings, upgrading the audio system, and yes, we did update the audio system, and making sure everything was seamless and connected to RV TV. It was a tremendous lift. And yet, everything came together on time and with care. So if you played a role in this effort, whether you're a part of facilities and custodial services, another city department or division, or one of our contractor partners, please stand to be recognized. Your professionalism, teamwork, and dedication to this space are clearly visible and your service to the city of Roanoke is deeply appreciated. Thank you. Can you, can you all come up and we can take a picture? I also want to say a special thank you to Dr. Patton, who I believe is still looking, who may be watching. So, special thank you. If you want to take a picture.
All of you, please come up so we can get a group, group hug picture.
All of you, please come up so we can get a group hug picture.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all. We're going to move now to item eight in our agenda, reports of committees. And only item here is a report of the Economic Development Authority recommending the issuance of revenue bonds not to exceed $40 million for Virginia Lutheran Homes Incorporated in connection with the expansion of Brandon Oaks located at 3804 Brandon Avenue. Michael Lockaby is counsel to the Economic Development Authority. We do have one resolution, and I need a motion and second on the resolution, please.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan and Ms. Sanchez Jones. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution solely for the purposes of Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended and Section 15.2-4906 of the Industrial Development and Revenue Bond Act, Chapter 49, Title 15.2 Code of Virginia of 1950 as amended, approving the issuance of an amount not to exceed $40 million in revenue bonds to be issued by the Economic Development Authority of the City of Roanoke, Virginia, for the benefit of Virginia Lutheran Homes, Inc., a Virginia non-stock corporation, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Lockaby?
Mr. Mayor, honorable councilors, first thing that I want to get out of the way is that this is not a city debt. This is also not an authority debt. This is a situation in which we're providing effectively an economic development opportunity for Brandon Oaks in order to expand their facilities. Oftentimes, 501(c)(3) organizations, there are also situations in which small manufacturing facilities and others and schools can do this as well. But oftentimes, healthcare facilities will want to issue long-term debt that is exempt from taxes, where the interest on it is exempt from federal income taxation. Effectively, this makes it a lot cheaper for them to borrow money. However, in order to keep them from abusing this particular opportunity that the federal government provides to provide this tax exemption, they require that the local government, the highest elected body of local government, say, yes, it is in the public interest for us to issue this debt on a tax-exempt basis. Basically, Congress sees furthering the nonprofit community, particularly healthcare facilities, as being in the public interest, but they want to make sure that you, as the highest elected body in the city, agree with that for this particular instance. The Economic Development Authority has voted on and adopted what's called an inducement resolution, where they say that they believe that this is in the public interest and consistent with the purposes of the Industrial Development and Revenue Bond Act. And they respectfully request that you approve this and so that they can move forward with providing this tax-exempt financing opportunity to Brandon Oaks. I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lockaby, for that very helpful explanation. Questions or comments, discussion by council?
I'd just like to say, I think you did a great job when you sent it out to us to explain everything, and I do appreciate the depth and all of the information that you gave us.
Thank you, Ms. Powers.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Webb, I believe we're ready to call the roll.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the resolution is adopted. Item two is comments on certain authorities, boards, committees, and commissions in which city councils serve as liaisons or appointees. Do we have any council members that want to bring forward any reports today? Okay. There's no unfinished business, no consideration of ordinances and resolutions, so we'll move to motions and miscellaneous business. This afternoon, we have two council member initiatives that are going to be presented. And as we get to these, I'll ask each council member to present their council member initiative. Before we do that, I want to review with the, with those who may be watching, this is a relatively new process for us as council members. City manager Turner brought this to us as a way for us to flesh out research, work with staff, to bring forward initiatives that can help us better govern. As you know, we're elected to govern, but once we're elected, we govern. And so, if there's a way we can strengthen existing policies, whether that's enacting new ordinances, amending ordinances, or developing programs that we think will be beneficial to the city, this is an opportunity for us to do that. So, the process is essentially, a council member can complete one of these forms. They submit them to the city clerk. And then, there's an initial administrative review of these. In other words, that goes to the city manager, the city attorney, the finance department, depending on what the implications are, the impacts for each initiative. Staff works through a review with that council member. At the same time, the council members are asked to talk with their colleagues, that's us, about what they're working on, so that by the time these initiatives get to us, we've had some conversation about them. But that doesn't mean we can't have conversation on the dais about them, whether it's implications or impacts. So, prior to the 2:00 meeting today, we announced the Hope and Home Task Force members. That was one of the first council member initiatives. So, I just wanted to let you all know sort of the process that this goes through. It's not a perfect process, but it's a helpful process in getting us to this point of navigating some things that we'd like to be able to address. So, I'm first going to turn to Councilmember Nash, who has an initiative he'd like to share with us today.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Cobb. My council initiative form is pretty simple, in my opinion. It's to have the city manager, various other folks within our city's departments that come up with a business operational fee for vape shops, smoke shops, hemp shops. And when I say those words, I think most of us in our minds have a picture of what I'm talking about. These are not your typical sheets or your shale gas stations that may sell some jewels or some simple smoking nicotine devices, e-cigarettes. These are the stores that have neon signs brightly lit up, plastered all over the wall. And when you walk in, they don't just sell the simple e-cigarettes or jewels, but they sell Delta 9, Delta 8, Galaxy Gas or Whippets at some of them, along with products containing traditional kratom, which is a, can have psychoactive properties. And now, most recently, a new compound extracted from kratom called 7OH, which can activate the same opioid receptors in the brain as heroin and also morphine. And so, it's important to me that when I campaigned, I campaigned on making Roanoke happier, healthier, safer. And I feel that removing these sort of businesses from our community 100% makes them, makes our community healthier, but these businesses also tend to target and cluster in low-income areas of our city and also city, parts of our city that's home to people of color and marginalized communities. And the second vacant storefronts or vacant commercial space becomes available, they sweep in, snatch it up. That also means that from an economic development standpoint, that's one less business that could be beneficial to the neighboring neighborhood or the folks that live near that area. They're deprived of an opportunity to have a place to eat, a place to shop, a place to have fun. Instead, they get a store that sells nothing but addictive and harmful products and sometimes cater that towards our youth. So, in essence, that is my initiative form. And if any council members have any questions or anything they'd like to add on, the floor is open.
Thank you for that overview, and that information you just shared would be, I'd love it if you could forward that to us. I learned a lot just listening to you about, about some of the, some of the direct impacts. I know we're aware of some of the risks certainly, but, and I also am aware of how quickly some of these shops try and sweep in to buy up vacant properties, and that can be very concerning. So, questions, discussion from council? Mr. Volleson?
Yeah, I'm always a pro-business kind of guy. I want, one of my worries that I have when thinking about this bill is if we're putting this fee on just those smoke shops, why are we not putting that fee on gas stations as well? If this is a public health initiative. And I also want us to look at who are the, the business owners that own these establishments? You know, it could be that they're a certain minority. It could be that we could be inadvertently discriminating against them. And so, I want to make sure that those types of issues are dealt with with us. But I do like the idea of trying to improve community health through some, kind of like the cigarette tax, where, you know, you got to pay more if you want to go ahead and ruin your own health.
That's, that's a great point. And I think, you know, part of what we're discussing here is how we want to move forward with this initiative. We like to strive for consensus on the council, because then that moves it forward to get some of, some more of this detailed information and how it can be rolled out. So, Ms. Powers?
So, and I believe these type of items that they sell that you're talking about, Councilman, is they don't pay taxes. There's not a, there's not a stamp on them like a cigarette stamp, so they are treated different. So, and, you know, I personally know of a friend of mine who's, has a child who was vaping and is, you know, very ill, got very ill in the hospital and almost died, and it was from vaping. So, it's very unhealthy.
You know, I think there's, there's one element to this, and this is one of the distinctions between a sheet versus, I'm not going to call the business out by name, but some of these other businesses in the community is where they source their products. So, it's the quality in what they're selling. And are you trying to sell a product that's a nationally recognized brand that although, yes, it's a product that is not good for you, it's made with a certain level of quality and standard behind it? Versus, are you just wholes shipping them from any old factory or warehouse from anywhere in the world where these devices are directly putting heavy metals and other substances into your body? So, that's just another element of it.
Are there any state code regulations, Mr. Spencer?
We're going to need to research this, as well as the best approach. That'll be part of the process of working with the administration. David Collins in my office will be the person I will assign this particular project to if council approves it.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Mr. Nash, thank you for your initiative. I know that there is a, I will say, epidemic or lots of kids are vaping to, I mean, lots of kids are raping. And I had a conversation with a young man and told him the dangers of vaping, and, and he says, well, if it was dangerous, why would Cuba easily be bought at the grocery stores? Not grocery store, but at those vape shops.
Vape shop, yeah.
Yeah, and a lot of the kids that are buying them are underage.
Yeah.
And that is a concern.
A lot of them do not ID, and then, some of these shops also sell, and I was talking to a member of RACAC, and she showed me a picture of a drawer of, of, you know, highlighters, rulers, all types of school products. And in the picture was a highlighter, but when you pull the top off of it, it's not a highlighter, it's a vape.
Oh, gosh.
So, a kid could, you know, a teacher could look in your pencil pouch. I don't know if kids got pencil pouches still.
They don't have pencils.
You could look in your pencil pouch, and you'd think, oh, or a parent at home, or, you know, a caregiver thinks, okay, that's just your, you know, highlighter sitting on your desk. But knowing, you know, it could be an electronic cigarette, or it could be something delivering, delivering another substance, so.
Flash drives, too.
Yeah, flash drives as well.
Yeah, Mr. Volleson?
If I may, I just, I'm such a fan of metrics. So, if, you know, it's a community health issue. There's some data that shows what that looks like in Roanoke, or even in this area, that could be extrapolated, and then kind of, I think, building off of that data. I like to see the numbers when we're making decisions so that we know, you know, what we're, what we're dealing with.
I was just going to say, I know you talked with RACAC, but also the Roanoke Prevention Alliance, and there's another, there's another body that Nancy Hands is the head of, that changed its name. That, like, the Partnership for, Partnership for Community Wellness. So, and I know they have a lot of data related to this. Mr. Hagan?
I'm just wondering, why the $20,000 annual figure?
Yeah, because some of these stores are very profitable.
Okay.
And 5,000, like in Roanoke County, they do a 5,000 business, $5,000 yearly business operational fee for massage parlors to try to discourage their existence. And that's not very effective, you know what I mean? And so, these businesses in particular, these vape stores and hemp stores and smoke shops, they make so much money that $5,000 is nothing, you know, for them just to write a check or bring in and pay.
Okay.
And so, honestly, you know, I want to give them an amount that hurts to pay. And so, if you want to start this business up, you may think twice before doing it, or if you currently have this business in practice, we're able to get some of the money off of you that you're not getting from paying the cigarette tax.
Okay.
And still discourage you and try to keep our community healthy.
Yeah, of course. So.
Do you, other questions? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Nash. Nash, excuse me. Where's the sheriff? I'm wondering, so, not knowing a whole lot about how the business operational fees work, is it a lump fee on top of the company, the business would have to pay, it sounds like a 20K fee to operate? And I hear, well, I guess to pull back, I appreciate you putting the initiative forward because I do think a lot of these shops are predatory. I think that vaping is a huge problem, and then some of the products that kids are getting access to, people have access to are dangerous or at least unknown, could be dangerous. It seems like we are kind of fighting against a failure of federal and state regulations on these products. And I wonder, did you also look at or consider, because you mentioned not pulling in gas stations or convenience stores, is there a way to maybe simultaneously also look at pursuing state-level legislation on proximity of these types of businesses to schools, to things like that, daycares? Because it seems to me like we might, let's, you know, if this initiative were to move forward, become an ordinance, and we were to block a vape shop from opening up in a location that we thought could be harmful to the community, a lot of those same products could be getting sold through the 7-Eleven or something else that might still be allowed to come in. So, I'm not saying I'm opposed at all. I'm supportive of looking at how we can better protect our residents, but I wonder, is there also some way to, in parallel, look at the siting of these facilities? And then also, the, I know you have something to say, Mr. Spencer, but the, the product itself is, it strikes me as the problem.
You know, I, can I jump real quick? I had met with Ms. Papa a few months ago and had actually talked with her and Phil about doing exactly just that. You know, multi-prong is a word Ms. Turner threw around a lot during budget, but when we're addressing issues like this, it has to be multi-pronged. And so, this initiative is just one aspect of it. Now, it's very hard. I had initially pitched to them, like, 1,000 feet from this, 1,000 feet from parks, 1,000 feet from church, and that creates a lot of extra work to try to police 1,000 feet from all these various locations. And so, they were, and they're still in the process of coming up with some, with some good concrete ideas that helps to control where they go and change a little bit of the permitting process for them.
Mr. Spencer, did you want to add?
Just one thing, that as we work with staff on this, we're going to look at legal consequences, and there are two things I want to bring in to play. If the focus is truly the health, safety, and welfare of a product and its adverse impact, we're probably going to focus more on that, coupled with a hate. we're probably going to focus more on that, coupled with, I hate to bring up this, because I know Mr. Voloson might be good friends with Ms., with old Judge Dillon, but he might come resurrect his head on whether we have the ability to regulate and what ability we have. So that'll be part of the process. We're gonna look at this and then working with staff, and even if we can't do exactly what you've asked, I believe that the spirit of this is that staff come up with ways that we can address the issue and give council options to best protect our residents. So I hope that's the spirit that we would go into this with.
Absolutely.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. Hagan?
Yeah, and this more question for Tim. Does Virginia allow localities to tax directly vape and vape oils?
That, I do, I'm not aware of specifically how to do this, and it might be a license, might be, have to be other approaches that we take.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is not a tax.
Yes, I'm.
It's a fee for their business. There's a difference.
Or a license.
All right. Vice Mayor McGlarve?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, well, I'm glad to keep working with you. As you know, Councilmember Voloson and I, with Ms. Turner and Mr. Roman's helper, working on our legislative agenda, so it seems like there could be some synergy with this. So glad to keep working with you on that.
All right. So it seems to me with some of these points of additional information and questions that we have some consensus about recommending this to move through the.
As long as there are consensus, then Mr. Spencer and I and our teams will work together to kind of bring back a recommendation, because it's not, you're not approving it. You've given us consensus to study it and bring back recommendations.
Yeah, consensus to study, right. Because we're not taking action other than consensus to study this. So, want to be clear about that. All right? All right, our next one is Councilmember Hagan, and so I will invite you to share your initiative.
Yeah, so this is an initiative to, to potentially, to study the effects of a repealing or amending of, I'm not gonna read the ordinances, but these address the mass rezoning. And the reason why I had suggested this, and thank you to everybody who came out to speak today, is, well, y'all were able to come out to speak. One of the largest concerns that I've had about this is the lack of public input when these changes occur in neighborhoods. I've found that when that happens, people tend to get litigious, which then raises costs for everybody, win or lose, because at speaking, again, as an attorney, we like to get paid. And so that was one of the impetuses for trying to address this. So, and I'd like to know what, what it looks like if we do go about the repeal, both from the legal side as well as zoning, as well as tax implications thereof, or if we go about to something where there is much more of a process of community engagement when these types of things occur.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hagan, and we'll, opportunity for discussion. Mr. Voloson?
I'd like to first, to, there are a lot of issues that I, of course, have with, with trying to repeal the zoning that we put forward a couple of years ago. I am not opposed to amending it, to making sure that there are tweaks that make it a better law than it currently is. But I do think that there, this idea of repeal is a step too far in that it does bring us back to some of our more discriminatory types of language in our, our zoning code. With this council member initiative, though, I'm very, I have to say, I'm kind of disappointed in that it's very vague. You're basically asking the staff, the planning department here, to study all the outcomes, what'd you say, taxation?
Legal.
Legal.
And zoning.
And zoning, all of those, for repealing the ordinance and for amendments to the ordinance. Now, there's 60-some pages that were amended during that ordinance. So just saying, hey, go study this, is kind of a giant task for our, our government to take on. I mean, when, when I came forward with the zoning amendments that we made, I said, these are the things that we would like to see, these are the things that, you know, we can probably do. I met with the, the planning and zoning department, and we went through a couple of years' worth of, of getting these things together. For you to come and then just say, here, study everything, I think is a little bit, it's too vague, and I don't see, I, there needs to be something that says, hey, these are the amendments I'm looking for. You know, this is, our job is to create policy. And so by saying, planning department, go study these things and come back and tell me what you think we should do, you're pawning off your job as a politician to come up with these policies and trying to put them onto a planning department that has already studied this and has already done what they believe is the best thing to do for some of these things that you say, like transparency. If I may, Ms. Papa Moore, I'm sorry, Ms. Papa, sorry, that's right, I forgot. She used to have a. Could you please tell us what you guys did for public outreach during both times? And I will remind everybody here that we not only passed this once, we had to then go back and pass it again. So if you would please remind everybody what we did for outreach during both times that the zoning amendments were passed.
Sure, happily. And, and thank you all for the opportunity to comment on this, and thank you for the opportunity to bring this issue just to light in an open forum, to have this conversation. It's, I know that it's been a concern and a point of conflict in the community, but I appreciate the dialogue. So just to recap and to acknowledge that the zoning amendments or the reforms we're referring to began in 2023, and those were built upon the work of the Comprehensive Plan, which was a public engagement process in 2020, which was ultimately adopted in 2020. But just to get to the numbers, in the first round of community engagement, staff held six open houses, and those were within September 23, September of 2023 and October of 2023. Those were in-person open houses that occurred at all of the respective city branches of the public libraries. Within the second round, six open houses, again, at each of the respective branches of the libraries, as well as a virtual open house, which had staff available to answer live Q and A. That was in addition to the public engagement that occurred through community surveys, through other means, a public service announcements. We developed a, an educational video to give the public a baseline understanding of the topics related to zoning so that they could be informed to engage with us on these really very important issues that are quite technical. And so we also, as you all know, had a, a sign campaign. We distributed 300 signs with, throughout the community. We engaged, after the second round of community meetings in February of '24, we engaged the community again in August through five additional community meetings. The Neighbors of South Roanoke, Northwest Neighborhood Development Roundtable, Melrose Library, Belmont Library, Raleigh Court Neighborhood Association, as well as other stakeholder groups outside of those five community meetings, which included several church congregations, the Blue Ridge Interagency Council on Homelessness, as well as other, just again, stakeholder groups on the topic of zoning reform. Does that answer your question, or?
Well, and also, I do believe with all the public comments that we received, do we answer those questions?
We did. We actually, those questions remain, and those answers remain available on our planroanoke.org webpage. We have a dedicated zoning webpage where frequently asked questions that we heard, and all of those engagement touchpoints were responded to. We didn't always end up with agreement, but we did listen and, and respond, and again, those answers remain available today.
Director, how many people on average would attend those meetings?
The highest, the highest, I don't have an average for you, but I could, I could list out each and every one. The highest attendance at the, the library sessions was 30, the lowest was four. And there is a range that varies in between. In our reporting on engagement, we have stated that we've engaged 170-plus in those community meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
And then a much bigger number online.
Ms. Papa, did you guys also do a public, public relations? So didn't you have some newspaper articles?
Yes. Yes, so speaking, sure. The media, on the media piece that picked up the topic in the first round, so the March, heading towards the March of '23 adoption, there were 18 news stories that we catalogued as covering the zoning reform, and then heading into the second adoption, 20 to 30 media stories. We also had a staff-initiated public service campaign, again, with those campaign yard signs meant to access a different, people at a different level with QR codes, and that, those types of interaction created 11,000 new users on our, on our Plan Roanoke page. 2,000 of those users were directed from social media and, and other, other means than a, just a Google search, so maybe a QR code.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And my point in that is that I believe that there has been plenty of transparency, and even with those folks who have come here to speak today, those same folks were there the second time we did this, and we offered to speak to them directly, and they did not take us up on those offers. So when she met with, when they met with Raleigh Court Neighborhood Association, South Roanoke Neighborhood Association, those were invitations from those neighborhood associations that had issue with what we were doing. So to, in your, in your initiative, to say that we need to study the effects in a way to ensure that community engagement and transparency, and I believe we've done that, and we've done that at a higher rate than it's ever been done in this city before. You also go on in your issues and considerations to, that it's, reasserts the goals of ensuring equitable development and that people have a voice again. First off, I would say they did have a voice. Second, where's your data on this? What, what, what makes you think, or makes it that it's going to be more equitable if we do this again?
I personally believe that equity can come, because equity is effectively fairness. It arises from making sure that people do have a voice in their neighborhoods, in their communities. The problem with the current zoning is that it doesn't have that when there are fundamental changes that occur.
I just showed you that there, there has been plenty of that. And so what I'm trying to get at is that I think this CMI needs to be more fleshed out, and that this is a very, I would say, lazy attempt to get a political issue dealt with. You ran on this being your, your political issue, was that you were going to repeal, and now repeal or amend, and you've given a sentence answer on almost every one of these questions to a document that's over 60 pages. I, I actually saw the gentleman in the back that spoke had four different studies that he announced in his three-minute speech, and yet I don't see any information or data other than opinion in this. And so I, again, am not opposed to us amending it. I do believe that it should be amended, but I do believe that this needs to come back to us with more detail. Otherwise, we're sending our, our administration onto a wild goose hunt for amendments that you would like to, I guess that you don't know what you want yet on those amendments, but that the cities, using the cities' time and resources, they can figure out what those policy changes are and then come back to us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Voloson. Ms. Powers?
Question for Mrs., for Ms. Papa.
I hope the answer's in the screen folder.
So, you know, I'm trying to listen to everybody, and I certainly respect everybody's opinion. So my question is this, if something is going to change a zoning, somebody's going to do something in their neighborhood, would a citizen that lives in that neighborhood have a right, will they find out what's going to go on in their neighborhood?
I think that's.
Or will somebody just come down here, get their permits and do it, and the neighborhoods never find out what's going on? Is that, that's really a yes or no question?
It's a, it depends answer, and it depends on the zoning, but I think it's an incredibly insightful question, given the discussion that's gone on here. There's the level of notification that's required for, on a, by development basis, based on the zoning classification and the underlying regulations. So one of the things we have done with zoning reforms is remove barriers and expanded by-right development, which does admittedly remove some aspects of notification for specific neighborhoods to be aware through direct mailers or through legal notices in the general circulation, through those means as part of that process. So it, it seems like there's, there's a discussion going on about the notification and engagement with the community about the reforms themselves versus more on a micro level, you know, what, what should notification look like going forward that perhaps preserves and streamlines the ability for by-right development, but also perhaps could mitigate notification concerns? I don't know, but they're two different issues, is my point.
Well, I think that's why our citizens are confused. I mean, you use the word to eliminate barriers.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that means a lot of things to a lot of people.
Sure.
Sometimes people think that means to restrict, you know, whatever goes on, and any, and I've heard people come up and tell me, oh, it means anything goes. But then yet I hear others in our government here just say, no, that's not what it means. There was over 100 code sections that changed, and that's a lot to look at. I mean, the average citizen does not know what any of that means. So, you know, I understand what everybody's saying. I think there's a lot of confusion, and all our citizens have asked is to sit down with us and let's talk about this. I mean, we really should never have our citizens having to file lawsuits against us. And, and it's gonna happen, I get that, but we can, we can eliminate those kind of things, but let's sit down and discuss it. And I think that, I really believe that's what our citizens are asking. I've heard people say, there are good things about it. You can go in any of our neighborhoods, go to where Councilman McGuire, McGuire lives, and there are houses over there that were big, humongous homes that now have apartments in them. There are other areas that have townhouses and duplexes and that kind of thing, but then there are other areas that don't have that, and like you heard, a lot of people that came and spoke to us to say that our neighborhoods are very unique, and people choose to live in a neighborhood that they want to live in. You know, like, I don't, there's no sidewalks in my neighborhood. I don't care, I'd like to have them, but it doesn't bother me that I don't.
Sure.
But again, I just feel like we have a lot of issues that people really need to sit down and talk about it, and I understand what he's trying to do, and I understand where you're coming from. But we need to be professionals at this diocese and figure out what makes our citizens happy. They pay the largest tax income revenue to this city, is our real estate taxes, and we need to listen to these citizens. Our other. taxes. And we need to listen to these citizens. Or other guys, I don't think that we're doing the good work that we were elected to do.
So I, I would take an offense to that as somebody who was on the council previously when we did this, because we did ask those citizens. We asked them multiple times. I, I understand where we're coming, where you're coming from on this, and that there is a lot of confusion when there's 60-some pages worth done. That is why we rely on the experts at our planning department, who are American Institute, certified planners, certified, that follow APA processes, that follow all the laws that we have to put out for all these different types of things. My issue becomes, okay, we have a lot of uncertainty. And that's the problem with this council member initiative, is it doesn't say, hey, these are the things that we'd like to amend. Like you just had a, a great point, which is it changes the amount of time or, or amount of voice that somebody gets. If he had put that on there as an amendment, as something to study, that's something that the, that they can actually go study and say, okay, this is what we've done. This is what the effects would be. But to say, go and study all the, all the possibilities of what this is, or what a repeal would do, and what all these, what amendments would do, like one amendment, one amendment has a big change, right? It can have a huge change. And so to, to put on our administration and our staff such a big, a big question, I think is too much. And I think it needs to be more like Councilman Nash has thought out, that he wants to work on vape shops, okay? If there are a set of amendments that you would like for us to study and look at, then that's absolutely fine. But I don't think that this is a, a, a good exercise for the city administration to have, to come up with those amendments for you.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Sure. Question?
Yeah, I was wondering, so I also hear where both of my colleagues are coming from, I think to an extent. And I wonder, so this question of, you know, the previous council member initiative we were talking about on vape shops, it's really, we're directing, asking staff to go out and look at some options and come back to us and give us something to work with and consider. I sort of see that as what this is as well, it being a bigger scope of issues, though. So I see what you're saying, Peter, Councilman, Council Member Volason, about it being, you know, kind of this like huge, where do you start? But what I'm wondering is, do we have to start from scratch? Because it's my understanding that citizens, the zoning updates were put forward, passed, and then we had to do that process all over again. Were there any changes between what was initially passed and what was then subsequently passed that incorporated feedback from citizens? Because I, I'm guessing, I heard from a lot of them that things they did or didn't want to see, that I'm guessing they were also sending those staff and others, that we probably have a good sense of where some of the friction points are with our citizens. Is that not a starting place to see what, you know, what are some of the issues that we most heard about when we were moving this forward? And were any of those adopted into the subsequent passage of the zoning package?
The first, and to answer that specific question, the first and second adoption were nearly identical.
Why was that?
The, the goal of it was to bolster and defend the reforms outright.
And it was to give a more, a second, a second process to, to review-
To the community.
To do more community engagement.
I would, I'm not done yet. One second. I would also say, I, I wonder if we could look at, I don't know if any of these professional planning organizations that our staff are a part of have best practices when it comes to community engagement. Because respectfully, what I saw, and you mentioned it yourself, Ms. Papa, with the yard sign campaign, to me, that was not public engagement. That was a PR campaign to try to influence the outcome. You know, we were using taxpayer dollars to create yard signs that said, complete my neighborhood, like a positive pro message. So first of all, no one in my neighborhood knew what that meant or what that was about. So it didn't say anything about zoning outright or in the, you know, top message of the, the yard sign. And it was directly putting its thumb on the scale in favor of the package. And in my view, I think the way we would be better doing public engagement is, hey, we have this idea between city, council, and staff that we would like to look at some changes. So let's give neighborhoods notice. We would like to update zoning. And here are some of the things that we're considering. What do you think? And instead, it felt to me a bit like we came at it with, we're trying to manufacture consent and influence the outcome from the beginning by not being very direct with people about exactly what we're doing. And then using city taxpayer dollars to try to influence that outcome. So I didn't personally, and that's, you know, I respect the work that everyone does, but I didn't think that was great public engagement, because I didn't think it was really straightforward about what was going on. And I think it was putting the thumb on the scale and trying to get the answer we wanted out of the public. So I feel torn about this CMI, because I do respectfully, Councilmember Hagan, I think it is very vague. And I think, I hear from staff, I think there are good things in here. I think it's hard for staff who put so much work into this for us to say, okay, go come up with some options for us to look at without giving any guidance. So that's why I hear what Councilmember Volason is saying. But I just wonder if this could be an opportunity to start sort of a process for, I mean, there are obviously concerns that people have that I'm sure you've heard of as well. And there is a majority now on council who would like to see some kind of changes. And the last thing I'll say is, why I want to give this some hope, is that I don't hear consensus on either side. I don't hear consensus from the community of the folks who are opposed to this. They run the gamut of repeal it to let's find some compromise, because some of these things could work. And I have, I think there, we run the gamut on council, that there's a member or two, or maybe more, I don't know, who'd probably be fine throwing it out. And there are some of us who, myself, I would put in the box of wanting to see some compromise, because I don't, I think there are good things in there that we could work with. So very long-winded way of saying, I'm wondering, can this council member initiative serve that purpose of allowing a dialogue and a feedback without being too onerous on staff in the way that Councilmember Volason is suggesting?
May I, may I address the comments about the campaign and the signs?
I'm sorry, can I interject?
Yes.
The, the challenge with the way the council member initiative is written is it doesn't give us guidance. Because right now, we do have guidance. And the guidance is the zoning that's in place. That is what council passed, regardless of if it was the last council, this one. That is what is, what is in place, and that is what will follow. Now, if it is you have some specific ideas or what you would like for us to look at, then we can do that. If it needs to be repealed, that's not a council member initiative. That's something that council will need to do. We are happy to look at, you know, whatever issues or whatever pieces that you want us to, we can do that. We just need direction.
That makes sense to me. And I do want, I'm sorry, Ms. Papa, I didn't let you respond. But I'll just throw my little, it's not my initiative, but I think, I mentioned to several of my colleagues that I think a compromise that I've been thinking about, and I haven't emailed it around, so I don't even know if it's a, a legal option available to us, but I believe previously residential projects, 14 units or higher, that might not be the right number, but I think it was something like that, had to have a public input process where they would go through Planning Commission and then City Council. And I would be interested, I think it is really important to have public input and engagement. I think it reduces lawsuits. I think it makes people, creates better buy-in. And I also think it ends up, we end up with better projects when developers have their feet held to the fire a bit from the public. So I would be interested in knowing if it's possible to just revert back to that. Not saying you can't do these other projects, that, you know, you can't tear down half a block and build townhouses. But if you're going to do that, you at least have to go through the Planning Commission and, and City Council. And so that would be something that I think, because I keep hearing lots about public input and that being a big concern. And I think that is a legitimate concern. And I don't mean too much to pick on that project in South Roanoke, but I think it does provide itself as a good example.
As a member of South Roanoke, I can tell you that there are a lot of people in South Roanoke that are very excited about that. And I can tell you that the businesses are very excited about that.
I haven't-
But I think what, what you're, what you're saying and what you're doing is saying, you know, there are definitely options that you would like to see. And I think that that is exactly my point, is that you have options, you have things that you've been talked to by, by folks, I see Mr. Stavola in the back there. I'm sure he has ideas. So why are those not on this council member initiative, so that it hones it down, so that our, our administration can actually look at that? I'm just, my suggestion is that we just table this until you're able to come back with more specific asks of our administration. I'm not saying we shouldn't do anything. You know, if we want to repeal it, that's something we'll talk about. If there's, if you want amendments, that's fine. I agree. I think there needs to be changes. We, even when we put this into place, we said, we know there's going to be changes that need in the future. And that's why we put the planning department on studying what's going on as it's happening. So, you know, we all recognize that that is something to do. The question is, if you're going to use staff time and staff energy, it needs to be more directed than just being so vague.
Mr. Nash?
You know, I think that, and I actually at home have a document where, and I had shared it with Mayor Cobb, and where I had listed on there some of the issues that I had and some of the solutions. Like, for example, in some localities, depending upon the size of the development, if it's a accessory dwelling unit, okay, they don't do any type of public notice or anything. But let's say it's a triplex, they'll do a public notice to those that live within a certain distance of the construction site, but it doesn't go through a planning commission or a city council hearing. And then if it's of another scale bigger than that, it goes through the traditional public hearing in the media, because that's when it's more impactful to the traffic flow, the surrounding neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera. And one gentleman, and I feel like, you know, we tend to kind of, I think it was Vice Mayor McGuire, I'm not sure who said it, but it's either, you know, either like, you can't have your cake and eat it too. There was a gentleman that spoke about the narrow streets and how narrow streets are safer for reducing speeds. That's very true. That's very true. But I think we can still maintain those narrow streets. The citizens, what they're concerned about is, as narrow as they are already, being even more congested with cars from potential development that can come. So I don't see why it's not possible for us as a city to say, okay, then, so if you're a development of a certain size, maybe you need to have .5 parking spaces per unit, or point, or one parking space per unit. I'm just saying, like, you know, I don't see why, and I can, and it, you know, I mean, I, I would support this going forward, because I can forward in all, I mean, it's a, it's a few pages long, the document I have, but I can forward that alone to help be a, kind of just share at least my opinion on the changes that I would like to see.
For example, the parking that you talk about, we as a city don't have a parking minimum. That's something political. That's something for us to talk about. That's not something, I mean, it is something that they would need to study. But again, we need to be able to tell them, hey, we want you to study parking about this issue, or this issue, or this issue. I know, being a planner, that a small change can lead to big consequences. And so when you're going to study these things, it's really hard to if you say, hey, study all the options.
Can I add one quick thing?
Sure.
I think it's also important to note that, I think going forward, because I'm all about going forward, you know, you learn from the past enough and look back at it enough to learn, but you don't dwell on it, you know? So we learn, we need to learn from the past. And as we go forward, I think that whatever comes out of this, you know, we just talked about the, the task force earlier today, and, you know, this new position that's going to be filled, you know, I hope soon with a great candidate to address housing and housing policy directly. So even what we're talking about today could change in 18 months. It could change in two years. So I think it's, it's important for us not to die on a heel, but to really work collaboratively with citizens and figure out, okay, what are those hard lines? What are the hard no's? Let's clear up gray area. And make sure that we keep that in the forefront of our minds as we move forward with whatever new housing policy or zoning or planning initiative that we go, that we do in the future, like community engagement and public notification.
So anything else? I have some thoughts I want to share, but Mr. Hagan, do you want to?
Oh, please.
Okay. So I'm, I'm kind of all over the place. I'm going to try and keep this as centered as I can. Having lived through this.
Twice.
But more importantly, I want, I want to go back to the development of the City Plan 2040. Part of me wants to say to citizens that this should, these changes should not be a surprise, because they were, the, the process, the goals were outlined in the City Plan 2040. And interwoven equity was an essential part of that. The rub that I'm hearing, there are two rubs, I think. One is about public notification and being engaged in the process, having, having a voice. We don't have any standard metrics or measurements on what is meaningful or effective community engagement. We don't. We can say, well, we only had 170 people turn out, so that's not sufficient. Well, we had more than that over all of the public hearings that we had and people coming to speak to council.
I had more people sign a petition about my Airbnb.
Right. So, so I, I think there, I will, I will argue that there has been sufficient public input on this, sufficient. I hear that, the other rub is that I think we have some people in, in some of our neighborhoods who just do not want change in their neighborhoods. They want to preserve what was. And, and I hear that as well, because there are elements of safety, of this is what, this is why we chose this neighborhood. There was, there was something really interesting that one of the speakers said earlier that I wrote down, that he said, you know, I want my neighborhood to be a neighborhood that I feel comfortable in. Well, I would hope that that's what we want for every neighborhood in our city, that wherever someone chooses to live, they feel comfortable and safe in that neighborhood. And that is not true of every neighborhood in our city. And so to me, the goal is, how do we make it true of every neighborhood in our city? And I think these zoning amendments had the intention of, of making that true. It's one piece of it. But we cannot address our housing crisis if we solely preserve single-family neighborhoods. That's why having a citywide zoning reform was so important. We have to have multiple offerings in every neighborhood. We have guidelines in our historic districts that offer extra protections that are already in place. So I, I think what I'm hearing more than anything, and, and what I, I do appreciate about this initiative, is a desire to find a way to enhance the public input process, the public notification process. I don't think, whatever we decide, I don't know that this is going to reduce litigation, because if people want what they had and can't get it, they're likely to sue.
Yep.
That's just the world of our, but, that being said, I think there are some people in our world that operate that way. I'm not saying that everyone here operates that way. And that's, please hear me. But I think what's been missing is an opportunity to discuss, like we're discussing now, how passionately we feel about this and what we feel like are some of the gaps in delivery of this. And I hear you open to that. So one, I add two thoughts here. One was, just to move this forward in some form. One is the, the possibility of us as council members engaging with the community over the next month, month and a half, two months. I like to set deadlines, too, so we can come back. But I was thinking about the possibility of workshopping this with specific recommendations. And they could initially be about public input, public notification, to, to more narrowly focus it.
Yeah, again, on specific projects, not necessarily the development itself. I think that was like kind of a confusion. That's on me, and I apologize.
So-
Like, as in, when there is a new development that does not fundamentally address the aspects of the, or, in the-
Okay.
Neighborhood.
So, but, okay, but I want to, I do want to take you all back, and I really want council to go back and read-
That's what I'm saying. Thank you. I appreciate that.
But I do want council and citizens to go back and read this document that September 16th, 2024, this is a city council agenda report. It was the second time we considered this. It's an absolutely thorough report. It's 60 pages. It not only includes all of the minutes from the public hearings, the Planning Commission, all of the summaries, but in the back, it's zoning amendments, report and study. The initial version was July 31st, 24, revision through- The initial version was July thirty-first, twenty-four, revision three was adopt, or presented September fifth, twenty twenty-four. This document goes through all of the guidelines in every zoning capacity. It's very thorough. I would suggest that before we, we come in and make all of these changes about clarification, that everybody go back and read this to have a full understanding of it. And it may be that this is the document we start from to raise these questions in a workshop setting. I, this is just one o- option I'm raising. The other option I'm, I'm interested in, if, if that, and maybe it's alongside it, is that there be, um, a smaller working group of two council members, city staff, planning department, reach out to citizens, and, and come back, talk through some of these changes. I, I think, I think sometimes having smaller group conversations about this is more helpful, because it gets us to, uh, what's at the heart a little more quickly. Uh, and maybe these could be done, uh, that, maybe these could be coincide. And, um, so that's what I'd like to put out there. I, I think the, the, the intent here is to really try and get us to some amendments that would be effective and meaningful, and, and potentially transformative in, in strengthening these zoning amendments instead of just eradicate them. Because I don't, I, I mean, I've had conversations with you all about this, and I don't have, I don't feel like there's an appetite on this council to repeal, but I do feel like there's interest in amending and, and making these, these policies stronger. And, and frankly, that's what I hear from most citizens. So I think that's what we need to get to. So I, um, I don't know, what, what do you all think about?
I think we should table this until we can have those, those amendments that we're looking at.
So, I, I don't think we need to table it, I think what we need to do is to, I think the spirit of this initiative, as I understand it, is to have some movement toward more thorough research and conversation about this. So if we could, and maybe tabling is another way, but I'm, I'm just looking ahead to our schedule. Um, I know, I'm not going to be here the first meeting in, in September. It cer- certainly doesn't preclude us from having a workshop, but I was wondering about the first meeting in October. I know we have a combined school board, a joint meeting with them, and we have a legislative committee. But if we could keep the, the rest of that morning light, would, would it be feasible for us to workshop this then, or at a, at an earlier council meeting? Uh, one of our two o'clock sessions?
Um, might I offer that we do a combination of the two suggestions that you mentioned? Um, because I think that, um, if you want to have some true dialogue, um, a lot of that's going to probably happen outside of this, um, uh, of the dias and of the, the meeting, and then we can bring some of that dialogue back so we can truly workshop it.
Okay.
In October.
Okay, so, um, I mean, I know who I'd like to recommend for two council members.
Okay.
It's Councilman Hagan and Councilman Ballison.
I happily accept.
Well, because I think, um, I just think that's important, and to work with staff, to initiate some of these conversations, informal conversations. Um, and, and I would focus initially, again, I'm going to resend this out to council, I'd like for all of us to read this. Have you read it?
Yeah.
Can you give us a report?
No. What I have to you all, about fourteen.
No, and I think that's what we want, is, is for individual council members to study this and, and, and suggest. Send them to Councilman Hagan and Councilman Ballison, uh, so that we have that data. Um, we'll, we'll work with community members, and then the goal being that at our first meeting in October, we'll workshop this, and we'll have more significant community input, uh, to come back. Does that sound like a plan?
Sounds like a plan.
Send that to all of us.
I am. Yeah, I'll send it to you this afternoon, because I know you're eager to read it this evening. Or tomorrow. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you both.
Thank you. All right, um, thank you all for that very robust and important conversation. Uh, so we are going to go, we are going to recess into closed session. Uh, we, we have, um, two more items, two, uh, two more closed meeting sessions. And then once we're done with those, we will come back in and, uh, share any appointments that we've made, um, certify our closed meeting, share any appointments we've made, and then adjourn for the evening, okay? Thank you all, we are in recess.
May I mention that citizens are invited? Tomorrow is National Night Out, and all the communities are going to be celebrating National Night Out. Encourage you and all the citizens of Roanoke to come out and mingle and get to know your neighbors.
We'll see you out there.
I always expect that there was one person to be here.
See, it's kind of...
Well, I have to make your mom happy.
(laughing)
If it wasn't you, it was Henry before.
Speaking of, where is Henry? I feel like I haven't seen him.
He's around.
Uh-huh. He's around?
Yeah.
Show up on you least expected. I know. Him in his red shoes.
I love red shoes.
Yeah.
I knew it. Actually, he's the one who brings them.
Yeah.
I was just saying that Henry, before him, with Henry, there's always a ramble for each other.
Oh, we need a clerk.
They never know when something's gonna drop.
Henry or Max.
Moving on up, I guess.
Could be.
All right. All right. Here she comes to save the day.
I think that would be nice. It could work with, uh, to get some art on the walls. I'm gonna have to do it on my own.
Oh, that'd be fun, too.
We should have pictures on there.
Yeah, they did.
We have to go look at a camera.
Oh, well, that's all I need.
We get that earliest.
To look at in the back. All right. Mr. Volleson, will you please read the motion to sort of our closed meeting?
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of city council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed session meeting was convened, heard, uh, were heard, discussed, and/or considered by the members of council in attendance.
Do you have a second?
Second. Just trying to make it with one breath.
We're ready for the call roll.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez-Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the motion passes. And I'm gonna turn to Vice Mayor McGuire to read our appointments and reappointments. And then, when he's done and we take the roll, please respond with all nominees.
Thank you, Mayor. To the Human Services Advisory Board for a four-year term, we are appointing Rachel McKinley. To the Board of Trustees for the City of Roanoke Pension Plan for a, it doesn't say how many years, but we are appointing Don Mullins, who will need a residency waiver. Again, that was Board of Trustees for the City of Roanoke Pension Plan. Human Services Advisory Board, we are appointing Wesley Cook, and he will need a residency waiver. To the Roanoke Civic Center Commission, three-year term, reappointing Sandra Vincent. To the Roanoke Neighborhood Advocates, we are reappointing Rachel Hale. And to the Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing Authority, we are for a four-year term, appointing Anthony Jennings, and he will also need a residency waiver. And then to the Towing Advisory Board for a three-year term, we are reappointing Lee Graves.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Nash?
All nominees.
Anthony Jennings, and he will also need a residency waiver. And then to the Towing Advisory Board for a three-year term, we are reappointing Lee Graves.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Nash?
All nominees.
Mr. Volleson?
All nominees.
Ms. Powers?
All nominees.
Mr. Hagan?
All nominees.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
All nominees.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
All nominees.
And Mayor Cobb?
All nominees. And there being no further business to come before council today, we are adjourned.